Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to today's special meeting of the Scrutiny Commission. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live to the public. For those not able to watch live, the webcast will be recorded and made available for viewing on the county council's website after the meeting. Before we begin, can I remind everyone to only turn on their microphones when you wish or invited to speak and make sure you turn them off afterwards? I've received a call from Mr Balls and Mr Galton is attending the meeting in his place, but I've just heard he's delayed in traffic, so hopefully he'll be joining us very soon. So we'll move on to item one. So I move the minutes held of the meeting on the 8th of September as taken at red confirmed and sign. Is that all agreed? Item two, declarations of interest about items on respect to the agenda. I assume all of those that are district councillors or borough councillors will declare another regisible interest in item four, so we'll take that as read. Are there any other declarations? Item three, declarations of the party whip in accordance with the overview and scrutiny procedure rule 16. Does anyone have any declarations of the party whip? Onto item four. So as members are aware, this meeting has been called specifically to allow for the commission to comment on the council's proposals for local government reorganisation as part of the engagement exercise being undertaken. His comments and feedback will be taken into account when shaping the business case. To provide the presentation today, we're joined by Jekyll and Keegan, the Director of Corporate Resources, Rosemary White, or the Head of Democratic Services, and Simone Hines, Assistant Director for Finance Transformation and Commissioning. We have all the chief officers present to answer any questions relevant to their departments. Also, we're joined by the leader, Mr Harrison, the deputy leader, Mr Crook, and the lead member for resources, Mr Fowler. I've also invited members of the political groups not represented on the commission to the meeting, so they contribute to the discussion. Mr Mayor is present for our teams and Mrs Bottomley is in the room, so welcome everyone. It's a very big table, so please bear with me while if you try to catch my eye. So I understand Declan, you will start with the presentation and then we'll deal with questions at the end, so I'll hand over to you first. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So the presentation will just really take you through the pros and cons of the different options that we've studied and a summary of the engagement activity that's taken place to date. And I would stress the business case still is very much in draft form, so any inputs from the committee can still be incorporated. So the first slide here is just a reminder of, excuse me, it will kick into gear in a minute. The first slide is just a reminder of the government's criteria, and you can see it does set the expectation that reorganisation should be a positive thing, both from a sort of a service and a financial viewpoint, although this obviously does depend on it being implemented correctly. So moving on to the next slide, this just sets out with different options considered and modelled, just list them out. And to simplify the presentation today, what we'll do is we'll focus on three of the options: a single unitary for Leicestershire and Rutland with no change at all to the city boundaries; the three unitary option that's been proposed by the districts in Rutland; and finally, a single unitary for Leicestershire and Rutland with an expansion of the city boundaries. And the sort of the expansion of the city boundary, in truth, the pros and cons are very similar, it's just a question of scale. So just for the purposes of this day, it's easier to kind of take them together to get those kind of those key points across, rather than going through every single one of the options. So in terms of the next slide, the table here just gives a very brief overview of the financial impacts, and Simone will go into a little bit more detail shortly, and give an overview of the approach we've taken to perform the financial modelling. And just before we sort of get into the detail of sort of the numbers, one significant problem nationally, and it is, it truly is nationally, is that everybody's taking a very different approach to the modelling. So comparisons are absolute nightmare, both between kind of county areas or even actually within county areas. So although we've aligned our modelling approach with the city council, so you can make some comparisons there, the district approach is very different, and actually it's showing savings that exceed a single county unitary option. So if I can just hopefully sort of save a bit of confusion maybe later on, you sort of step back from the detail, this doesn't really make logical sense, because if you can have, if you can imagine on sort of the district options, if there's two significant sized organisations serving the population of Leicestershire and Rutland, wherein the preferred option that we've got is just a single organisation, so you've got twice as many organisations. And not only were these organisations of significantly lower economies of scales with regard to purchasing power, you're also not spreading your management costs, your back office costs, over the same kind of funding base. So again, you get sort of an inefficiency on the economies of scale basis. And it's kind of what you do tend to see in other business cases and analysis by external consultants, is daylight between the savings for a single unitary and a dual unitary option, you know, with obviously the single unitary having sort of far superior kind of savings. If you do look into kind of the business cases published by the districts, I just sort of pulled out a couple of areas where the main differences are. The first one is kind of inclusion of significant savings that don't actually relate to reorganisation. So the districts have included just shy of £10 million for increasing charges to services like green waste planning fees and car parking. Now, these are policy decisions that, you know, councils can take at any point of town. They're not dependent on reorganisation, they're not enabled by reorganisation. And it's probably fair to say, I haven't seen any other business case that have included this level of savings, so it creates quite a distortion. And the other big area to be aware of is that the employee savings in the district cases are twice the level that our modelling is showing, so expecting twice the level of savings in this area. But that runs counter to the notion that you need extra people to support two organisations for them to actually function, you know, it's this loss of economies of scale I mentioned earlier. And you'll appreciate the kind of, you know, this is also mirrored in the transition cost, that kind of, you know, it's not just the sort of the savings are low, you'd also expect the transition cost to be sort of under pressure as well, because the sort of, you know, the sort of complexity, the reorganisation, the risk, associated risk is there as well. You can imagine if you sort of just try and exemplify this a little bit, you're trying to scale down the organisation's size of the county council to roughly half its current size, you know, and that's not easy by any stretch of the imagination. But the district's case tends to lean into the scaling up of Rutland. But to just give you an idea, you're actually proposing scaling up Rutland tenfold, so you're creating an organisation 10 times the size that Rutland is at, or is or, sorry, 10 times the size that Rutland currently is, you can imagine that's even harder than scaling down the county council. Now, this may partly be recognised in the district's case because it included £100 million of new borrowing for asset disposals and IT harmonisation, but it's not overly clear how this actually interacts with this sort of the savings and the transition cost. There's also quite a lot of information in the district's case around sort of proposals to invest in prevention activity and investment for economic growth. And again, these aren't sort of directly linked to reorganisations, and they're not features you'd normally expect to see in business cases, you know, and for example, they're linked to the proposal recruitment of 230 new posts for prevention activity. Never ever seen anything like that before, so just a bit of a health warning. If you're trying to compare like with like, it's very difficult at the moment, and you do have to be aware that people are taking different approaches to their modelling. So I'll pass over to Simone now, so I'll talk you through sort of our approach to the financial modelling.
Thank you. And I'll just start with a little bit of an overview about the approach to the modelling itself. And so we, as Declan's already mentioned, we have commissioned some joint modelling with the city council, and it's the results of that modelling that you've got on the slides. And the reason we did that was largely because one of the government criteria was about having consistent data and consistent assumptions across an area, and so to try and make sure that the business cases were built on the consistent assumptions and data sources. And so we commissioned that modelling jointly with Leicester City, and we've done that through an external consultant, so we've had an external consultant supporters on this. And again, that the part of the reason for that was to make sure that the modelling was objective by using someone external, we could help to ensure that the modelling was objective, and that it was also consistent with other business cases that have been developed across the country. We have used consistent data sources, so between us and City, we've agreed which data sources we're going to include in the business case modelling, and where possible, that data has been the publicly available data, so it is potentially data that the district's managers have used in their business case. And what we've tried to do as well is, as we've been forming the assumptions, is looking at what other LGR business cases have assumed, and looking at comparators to make sure that the assumptions that we're making are reasonable compared to previous business cases. And then the business, well, the modelling goes through a number of categories of costs and savings in relation to the options, so it looks at what the potential ongoing savings or benefits are across all of the options, what the one-off transition costs are, so there will be costs in the early years of reorganisation, looking at what those one-off costs are. And then for some of the options, there are also some ongoing costs of disaggregation, so particularly where social care is being split from the county into a number of different authorities, there will be some long-term costs of disaggregation, and then the model looks at that as well. And then, just to provide some extra assurance over the council's modelling, alongside the work that we've done jointly with City, we have also commissioned our own validation of that work, if you like, and we've used PWC for that. And that, PWC do have a model that has been used quite widely across other organisations, and the government actually have relied on some of the work that PWC have done. And whilst the PWC approach is quite different to the one that we've done with City, it actually comes to a similar outcome overall, so it just gives that assurance that although there might be two different approaches, and as Declan said, a lot of the business cases have come at this in a different way, made slightly different assumptions, so we've got essentially two models that are based on a slightly different structure but actually produce a similar result, and that gives us a bit of assurance that the outcome of the modelling is reasonable. And so if I just go then into a little bit more detail on the slide, the first slide up here just goes through the detail of the modelling outcome, and we focus this initially on the proposed option of the single county option, including Rutland. And the first column there just shows those main categories of savings that the model looks at. So we've got senior leadership, for instance, which is one of the larger areas of savings, and that is driven really because we are looking at reducing from nine authorities to one in that preferred option, so that is a big difference in the number of senior leadership posts that would be required in that preferred option, and that drives one of the larger savings. And it then looks at things like back office reductions as well, because again, you've got a lot fewer authorities operating, so therefore you don't need the same level of back office teams. And under the preferred option of that single county unitary, you've got opportunities around third-party spend, so bigger scale allows you to generate more economies of scale, bigger purchasing power, and the potential to rationalise contracts as well, potentially, because you've got less authorities to do that commissioning work. And there's then, it then looks at savings across asset base, the number of members, and the frequency of elections. And then it also makes assumptions about further transformation savings as well, so there's savings almost from day one of reorganisation, or once the transitional period has happened. And then, once those new organisations are established, that will then unlock a further potential level of transformation by having one larger authority that can look at service delivery differently, and look at reorganising itself in a different way. And then lastly, the model does look at disaggregation, as I've mentioned, particularly around social care and the impact of splitting social care up in those other options. And that has also relied on some of the national data that's been done by PWC and also by Newton, on the impact of social care disaggregation. And so for the single county and Rutland option, the outcome of that modelling produces an overall saving of about £43 million. What we've then done on this slide is just show at a high level how those assumptions and the outcome of that modelling has varied across those two main alternatives. So in terms of the three unitary impact, as Declan's already mentioned, you've got an extra authority in that scenario, so you've got an extra unitary which needs servicing by extras, you've got an extra layer of senior leadership, an extra layer of back office functions, you need, you know, an extra finance team, an extra legal team, for instance. And also because you've got your budgets, your spend split across two authorities, you've got less economies of scale and purchasing power, so the savings that we could generate on third-party spend would be a lot lower in that scenario. And the transformation benefits, again, would be lower because you've got two smaller authorities, you haven't got that same kind of level of scale and the ability to deliver services, you know, at a scale across the whole county. So that option, after taking into account disaggregation costs as well, that I've mentioned particularly in social care, produces a net saving of around £17 million. And then in terms of the city expansion impact, and this largely relates to the largest city expansion option, and I guess to say on this one as well, it is the more complex and uncertain option, it isn't, whereas the kind of three unitary option is one that other business cases have looked at, and in some areas it has gone forward, the city expansion option, particularly with the potential boundary changes, is not a scenario that has happened really before in previous reorganisations. So it's quite difficult to be really clear about what the implications of that option would be, and it's certainly be more complex in terms of delivery. And what I would say though is because, but both of the models that we have looked at incorporate the city spend into the assumptions, so it actually generates an extra sort of layer of saving, because it assumes that because City would be bigger than they are now, they increase their scale quite substantially, that unlocks a layer of efficiency for them as well, so it allows the city council to be more efficient than they are now. And that's why, if you look at the sort of the total savings on this slide, the city expansion option actually generates slightly higher savings than the single county option. I mean, it's in the same ballpark, but it is because, in theory, it allows the city to become more efficient. There are some areas of differences though in the savings, so the senior leadership savings, we think, would be quite slightly less, because City are growing, they will need slightly more, sort of higher leadership costs than they've got now. And the third-party spend savings are slightly high, because it gives City an ability to get better purchasing power on their costs as well. Similarly for transformation, as I mentioned earlier, because it gives City that extra scale, it allows them to generate more efficiencies on their running costs. But there is obviously some disaggregation costs with that city expansion option as well, because we are split, particularly the options that potentially would split districts, we're splitting county services and splitting boundaries, and that's a really untested area, as I've said. So although we've made some assumptions about that complexity, it is a much more unknown quantity than the alternatives. So that generates an overall saving of about £46 million, but the key here actually is how that saving is split between the county and the city. So in the larger city expansion option, that £46 million, the lion's share of that saving would go to the city, and they would pick up about £28 million of that saving, leaving the county with about £18. So although the city expansion option compared to the single county unitary is a similar saving, there is a lot more uncertainty and complexity in delivering that and actually putting that into place, but it also creates an uneven profile of those savings across the two unitaries that would be created. Okay, just go on to the next slide, which then, this slide looks at the one-off transition costs as well of each option. So there will be, from the point that, you know, a decision's made and we start to implement whatever the preferred option is, there will be some one-off costs that need to be dealt with. And the largest one there is staffing, the cost of reducing the staffing base that we've currently got, so staffing redundancies essentially would be quite a high cost. And we've then got some smaller costs around setting up a new organisation and closing down existing ones, and the cost of running the shadow authority, because there is a shadow authority that would run for 12 months before the new authority sort of formally go live. They're much smaller cost though alongside comms and marketing. The next sort of larger cost is programme management, and based on other experience, we think this would need to be in place for about three years. So from the point that you've got a decision around the preferred option, you would need to have in place, you know, a fairly substantial programme management team to do the transition work and to manage that, both in the lead-up to the formation of the shadow authority and then before vesting day as well. There'd then be costs around IT, around rationalising IT systems and all the data migration. And then lastly, we have built in, as all the business cases have, a contingency, just because of some of the unknown complexities, again, particularly with some of the city expansion options. And so the total one-off costs in relation to the single county option come to about £21.5 million. The three unitary transition costs are a similar ballpark, actually slightly higher at about £22.5. And there are likely to be lower staffing costs, so less redundancy costs, because the staffing savings are less in the district option, because you've got, again, you've got an extra authority, so you've got a lot more staff in the district option compared to the single county. So you would then have less redundancy costs, but certainly higher programme management costs because of the complexity of that disaggregation. The city expansion option then has higher costs again, so we estimate about £28 million, the city expansion, again, these are all one-off costs of transition. And that's really driven by the complexity of that expansion option, particularly because of the splitting of boundaries. So there would be higher programme management costs, probably higher IT costs, and we have built in a high contingency there as well, particularly because of those boundary changes and the costs that that would lead to. And lastly, probably on the city expansion costs as well, there are probably costs that have not yet been quantified, because they are kind of in that unknown, unknown almost, where things like asset transfers, there are assets that are currently within the county area that would transfer to City, and we don't yet know how that asset transfer would be dealt with, sort of who would own the asset, how it would be operated, and if assets did have transferred to City, would the county need to replace them, for instance. So there's quite a big question mark, I think, over some of the city expansion costs. But that's the summary of the costs and those savings on the previous slide. And then, just to confirm, as I mentioned at the beginning, we have had those assumptions validated by PWC using their model, and whilst it is based on different structure, it does produce similar outcome.
Did you want to stop now for questions to think on sort of finances rather than we move forward?
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea.
Yeah, that's fine. Just before I start, Chair's prerogative, can I just ask probably Declan, the announcement about Surrey, which is obviously the first one of this government's sort of transition about what bids were put in and what the government's now gone out, are you able to give a bit of clarity about the Surrey decision?
Rosemary may nudge me if I get it wrong, but my understanding was there was three bids for Surrey. One got dismissed straight away because it didn't meet the government's criteria, and this was around a couple of districts wanting to create a unitary around Gatwick Airport. So that kind of got put to one side because it was sort of breaking boundaries, etc. So it left two bids going in, one was the bid put in by the county council and a couple of districts, I think it was, for a sort of east-west unitary in Surrey, and then the other districts put in a bid for a three-unitary setup in Surrey. It is worthy of note, it's kind of, counties often do tend to go for a single unitary, they couldn't do that in Surrey because basic government said, if you want a devolution deal, it's got to be multiple authorities underneath the mare. So that for Surrey has had effectively, the kind of the fewest unitaries you could have in Surrey was two. Government have announced, like you say, there is a kind of, they've gone for the county and the two district preferred option of the east-west split, and so that's expected to go forward. The reason Surrey was first, the reason that seems to be muted is because of the significant debt of a lot of the districts in Surrey, Woking's £2 billion in debt, so governments agree to write off half a billion pounds, so they've still got an awful lot of work to do, and because of that, it's been sort of, I suppose, stated that this isn't precedent for other areas, which is probably kind of true.
Okay, I just want to go to Mr Harrison, Mr Fowler, Mr Crook first, to see if they've got any comments to make, and then we'll go to members' question, just on the finance, and then we'll go back to the presentation. So I go to Mr Harrison first, if anyone, you say just about the finances first, if we can just concentrate on that, please.
Yeah, sure. Obviously, you've heard Declan and Simone's appraisal of all of that, which we're all fully aware of. Obviously, we are supporting just one unitary authority, and we can see the savings there, but obviously, if the city is to take some away, well, our savings then shrink. So that's something of financial importance that I'm looking at very carefully. We as a group are committed to one single authority, so we know where we are, and we know what we're saying with clarity, but obviously concerned, because nobody knows, I was part of the modelling with John on that, and we're not actually doing it, but the discussions, and then obviously, we've had joint modelings, and now we've had our own separate overview of the results, etc. So I'm feeling really confident that if you have one nationally renowned company do the first stage, and then another one come to do an overview shot of it to confirm the original, I feel comfortable that our figures are going to be right, and I'm hopefully in that sense. But we are in this world where there's change going on all the time, and this is not just the first change for 50 years, but it's the most peculiar change, the way it's shaping up with the varietyism, various organisations baying for a particular part of the pie. So it is difficult, but we're holding our ground. I think our financial position has been submitted. Declan will tell you that there's a moving feast, but I'm comfortable the principles are correct, and I'm comfortable that what I've looked at, what Declan and Simone have explained, that where we are, within good reason, that you can't just put it on the table and say, that's it, because the whole thing is moving as we're going along. And obviously, we have no idea how government's going to respond to all this. But yes, very comfortable and happy with that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Crook, is there anything you wanted to add?
Thank you Chair, and good afternoon, members. Not a great deal now, I'm comfortable with the process we followed, the modelling we've undertaken, reaffirming of the modelling we've done, and cooperating with the city as well. I think we've done everything we could to get things right. Thank you.
Mr Fowler, anything you want to add at the moment?
Yeah, just quickly Chair, I think kind of to reiterate the point about PWC reaffirming the end result that we, excuse me, that we got, I think it's actually a strength that they have a slightly different approach to their modelling than we do and the districts do as well, that with two separate approaches, we've came to the same figure. I think that's kind of a better proof for the business case. So I personally, as lead member, feel very comfortable with the results of the modelling. And yeah, I think we've heard what the council's had to say when it comes to city expansion, and I think the business model kind of proves that, so we're very comfortable with defending the interests of the county, yeah.
Okay, well, open up to members now, if we can just try and concentrate on the finance as much as possible before we, did you want to come in, Chief?
Thank you. Just very quickly to say that the city council and ourselves did offer to the districts the opportunity to join in the joint commission, but they declined.
Okay, Mr King, I've got you first.
Yes, thank you Chair, thank you Declan and Simone for the rob through the financial PowerPoint. And I have to say Chair, I'm actually incredibly disappointed, to be frank, that we're here at this meeting and everyone's here, and all we've got is 16 pages on a PowerPoint. I think that is absolutely scandalous, quite frankly, and actually an insult to everyone involved, that we're here trying to come up with constructive comments of how we can strengthen our bid. We have not got the detail. I really feel that I can't, you know, yes, I can make all sorts of questions, but I just haven't got the detail. And unfortunately, that's unfortunate and it is regrettable. And I really do would like an explanation, quite frankly, why we haven't got that. The three, the districts have published last week their full business case with appendices in detail, and in that, they actually slayed the county council quite considerably, as I'm sure you know, about the lack of cooperation that has been, and whether that's true or not, you're saying it isn't maybe, but I, you know, I'm not here as a district councillor, although obviously I am one, but it is concerning, you know, when you read things like that. And, you know, so just if I can to, that's my main, what I want to say, but on the finances, I'm glad you've said they were verified by PWC, but what's concerning me is the different modelling that's been used, and how am I supposed to compare and contrast with the lack of information if another group of people are using different modelling to what we in the city have been using? How do I know? And then, just coming to the overall thing, so what we're proposing, what we're saying is that we're going to say £43 million annual savings by coming together out of what, a combined expenditure, gross expenditure at the moment, across all of those areas of what, nearly, is it nearly £2 billion? Or not far off that? I mean, county alone is 1.3, got out of all the districts in, had all the city in, we're talking, well, that's a very small saving to be had by doing all this work. But the specific question I wanted to ask as well was, in terms of the financial savings and the modelling, obviously we haven't got the detail, but is the modelling, is the financial savings reliant on the fact, on assumptions that council tax would have to be increased? And if so, what level of assumption has been made about council tax? Because in the district's modelling, they've been very clear that council tax will increase for a number of years to the maximum, and they also make assumptions about SEND being sorted out and there being no problems with that, and all sorts of other things, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. So I'm a bit concerned that, you know, are we looking at apples and pears here? And are we, do we actually have enough information before us, as I say, go back to my first point, to actually make any constructive comments and helpful comments, instead of basically just, you know, ripping it apart? Because basically I haven't got anything to really look at, apart from 16 pages on a PowerPoint, which I do think is just not, you know, where we are, and I'm really, and I'm sure others will feel the same. So thank you Chair.
Who wants to pick, several points in that, who wants to pick up the first point about, you know, why we haven't got the full business case to scrutinise?
Obviously, the leader may want to come in. The simple fact of the matter is that we are a minority administration, unlike some of the districts, I'd say. Unlike some of the districts, I'd say, some minority administrations, but we've not been in a position since May to progress any more rapidly than we've been able to. Sorry about that, but that is the reality.
Harrison, anything you want to add?
Uh yes, thank you. I'm confident on the reliability of what we've got. I know from looking at the districts, it's not comparing apples and pears has been quoted. But I mean, there's a lot of ambiguity.
I think the question is why we haven't got a full business case to scrutinise.
Pardon?
The question is, why have we not got the full business case as a scrutiny commission?
Well, I can assure you, that will be presently, we've had to take time because we're doing it correctly. We haven't done it in a haste where I understand they have a loan of 100 million potentially. That's not part of what we're supposed to be doing. So all I'm saying is, Madam Chairman, uh and to Mr King, it's a big deal. This isn't something to rush and compare with people who are not taking the time and expenditure and detail to produce their documents. And all I'm saying is, we want to do it right. If they've got theirs through, well, good for them and I'm pleased for them. But at the end of the day.
The point is, we're the scrutiny commission for this council.
Yes, I understand.
And this will be going to full council and then to cabinet, and it's less than a month now, a month yesterday, wasn't it? The question, I think, that the majority of us here want to know is, why we've not got the full business case to read through, to scrutinise, to give our comments to, to critique, to make better, or whatever. All we've got is this PowerPoint. So if you can clearly answer that, we know it's really important, we all know that. Why have we not got the business case in front of us to scrutinise?
Can I try?
Yeah.
There've been two council meetings during the summer, as as members are aware, when reorganisation was discussed, one ordinary meeting and one special meeting. The outcomes, as was reported to the Cabinet uh in early September, on both occasions were frankly negative decisions. Members did not approve options rather than support a particular option. So the officers were left with a position as to where do we go from here. So a report to the Cabinet in September said, had all the background, and that was when it emerged, the administration's prerogative. They're perhaps, they're preferences for a single county unitary, including Rutland. But with the proviso that something needs to be done to recognise the City Council's case, because you can't just ignore it, as frankly the district councils are. The likelihood is the city will get some sort of boundary extension, and we need to reflect what that means for the county. So that in in summary is where we are at the moment. If we get an instruction or some support from elsewhere in the council for a single unitary, including Rutland, and to recognise the city's case, then we can we can easily prepare a business case. It isn't a big deal. It's there in draft, but until we know what the council's preferred option is, it's a bit difficult to progress it any further.
So why have we not got the draft in front of us then? And identified as a draft?
Because the council has not come to a position about its preferred option.
I think we have, to be honest, because we said we didn't agree with the city.
With respect, you haven't. You've taken negative decisions. You opposed a city extension and you opposed the preference of the districts. Those were the two council decisions.
And supported the one council?
No, didn't.
Okay. That's how I I read it in July. So you're basically saying from May to September, the leadership haven't decided which direction they want to go until the cabinet decision. In September, from that point, you've built the business cases.
The leadership can speak for themselves, but I'm, you can look at the minutes if you want, but I I don't believe the council, either the two council meetings in July came to a decision to support a single county unitary.
Okay, um do you want to pick up the other point to Mr King's questions?
So the the first one, comparability, obviously, as as we've done our modelling, we've kept it consistent across the different um scenarios. So you can, you can rely on that. I mean, that was part of the reason we got the sort of the the backup assurance that went from P W C. So it can give you that assurance that how we've modelled it does give you that fair light with light comparison. Like I say, it's it's impossible, and this is a kind of a a problem of government's um creation that it is down to individual authorities to do their own modelling, and we've seen this replicated across the the country. So that's not not a problem that's local, but we can give you that assurance that you can make those comparisons off the information that we'll provide for you. The the small savings and comment, I mean, it is a significant saving to get the sort of the, that level of saving is above what you normally get from most of the sort of proposals that would put normally put in fo- in front of you. It's worth bearing in mind that this doesn't make savings from where the majority of the council makes its expenditure. So social care and placements is obviously sort of our biggest expenditure item. We spend significant money on things like kind of highways maintenance, waste disposal, etc. They're not impacted by the savings proposals. If you look at the the costs that are impacted, your finance teams, costs of members, senior managers, things like that. They are, it is a significant reduction on those levels of savings. You've just got to take it in context of what's actually impacted. And then the final one in terms of council tax, again, council tax is a future decision. It doesn't need to be taken into account, you just assume in a neutral position. So these savings are are independent of any future council tax decision. It's all about taking cost out of the the council's kind of overhead base effective.
Mr Pennington?
Yeah, we need it. Um thank you, um Chair, and thank you for the presentation so far. Um in terms of the city expansion options, to do 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 they, as they, as the city proposed them? Or could any iteration of a city expansion threaten the future incarnation of Leicestershire, what would remain of Leicestershire? So is there any sort of long-term sustainability um concerns there that by expanding the city, we could be almost built in to fail an organisation that can't look after itself, given the context that we're already lowest funded county council in the country?
And this, effectively, the more sort of the the County Council have to shrink and you're losing those economies of scale, the harder and harder it gets to then sort of meet to the financial challenge. Now, the initial modelling doesn't show that it's kind of terminal on the sort of the face of justice exercise. The big concern that I'd have with a big city expansion is it's a very, very complex kind of undertaking. You have to start off with kind of an awful lot of preparation, legal agreements, etc., to make sure the whole thing works before you actually get into making any savings. So the issue you've got there is a lot of the savings activity that normally takes place just can't take place. So you're almost into kind of death by a handful of cuts, as it were. You're kind of, you're shrinking your economies of scale, so you're losing out on what should be a good opportunity. But you're also having to delay an awful lot of the kind of the the normal activity you'd have, that you normally try to sort of improve and develop the council, just sort of goes by the the wayside. And it's also a very risky kind of transition. So there's an awful lot of kind of, you're going to have to put quite a bit of money into making sure that sort of transition works. So it's kind of, it's maybe not an immediate death knell on the face of the modelling, but I would have an awful lot of concerns about sort of how this authority functions. If, you know, to get through the other side of reorganisation successfully into camera, it's not a perfect analogy. But if you look at previous reorganisations, when it's been a single um unitary creation, they tend to fare better when it's been a sort of split up. The Northamptonshires have been back to government for exceptional financial support, the Cumbrias have been back to government for exceptional financial support. So I say it's not a perfect analogy, but it does give you a bit of an insight.
I have got your name down, Mr Mayor, so um you can take your hand down if you want, I've got you. Um Mr O'Shea is next.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Declan and Simone. It it's very interesting to to hear, you know, what what you had to say today. And having two reports gives me quite a lot of confidence, but as a Conservative group, we were very confident on the one council in the beginning. And I'm really pleased that the administration has uh done the U-turn and 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 followed that, because it makes sense for the county. Uh when I look at all the figures uh on on both the 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 districts, they've come up with some figures that I I I honestly believe are unbelievable. Um but to have two different um adjudications with Pricewaterhouse and and the and the other one um coming more or less the same area gives a lot of confidence um to me as a councillor, and I'm sure to to our group uh across and the whole council, that, you know, we are going in the right direction. But I have just one complaint to make, and I never make complaint against officers normally or or members. But the first thing I knew about this was when I walked in today. Really, as a scrutiny committee, we should have the documents before us in a more detailed decision, like Councillor King has said, before we come to scrutinise something. And and to be honest with you, you know, I've been out, I've been out today, I've come back to the meeting today. Uh and I've passed one, the the first thing I saw was the email, which I linked on to to see, you know, this presentation. So that's my only criticism. Uh and it, you know, I know officers have been extremely busy. Um but, you know, I would have thought we'd have had, honestly, the administration putting this out a little bit more detailed. And certainly to the scrutiny committee a good week before, so we could really digest it uh and come to the meeting fully briefed. But that's my only grief.
Chief?
Just to confirm the minutes of the two July council meetings, the second meeting, the special meeting. In summary, the 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 decision was simply to oppose any city boundary extension. The first meeting, there was an amendment which was successful, and part of the amendment noted that the city and the county councils were in agreement that a two-unit option was preferable, but there was no decision on boundaries. So as I said, I'm of the view, there was no positive decision from either those council meetings about a way forward. So we've been reliant on the administration. As soon as the administration told us what their preferred option was, we've taken action, including the modelling. And in response to Mr O'Shea and Mr King, the modelling was discussed at the group leaders about a month ago. And then with the group leaders' agreement, presentations were made to the individual groups on the modelling. So what you're hearing today is really an extension of what was presented to the groups some time ago.
To add to Mr O'Shea's from anyone? No. I've got others waiting first, I'm afraid. Mr Ins is next.
Thank you, Chair. Um I just want to investigate this uh, the Borough Council position. Why is it that they've refused to um uh compare figures? Because surely we need to see quite, some quite detailed figures from the from the Borough Councils. Do we know what the 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 debt is? Do we know uh what their liabilities are, etc., etc.? Because as a uh to move forward with this, don't we really need to understand what we are taking on?
I mean, effectively, in talking about it, it's almost due diligence of the sort of the Borough Councils them themselves. So in terms of, like you say, their their debt position, any sort of future liability. So if we've had a bit of a sort of a a review of, I suppose, well, there's probably sort of three aspects. We've got a review of their M T F Ss and where they they are, and it's kind of, they're not the worst in terms of sort of district councils kind of nationally, but you've got a sense. It does add to the kind of the the savings challenge that is is there. That's been compounded then by the second aspect, which is funding reform. So we've, we're a little bit sort of stung by government in terms of what information has been released. But initial modelling does show that some of the high sort of um business grade growth districts are really suffering, are suffering under funding reform. So that is a concern, that when the kind of the unitary authorities go live, there is going to be sort of a a new sort of savings requirement that lays into there, which, to be honest, just kind of reinforces the need to kind of do do reorganisation. And I suppose the third piece is the, I suppose, the the balance sheet review, which again, we'll do, we've done sort of a cursory look over. There's nobody in um, and the reason we've done a cursory look over is because there's nobody in Leicestershire anywhere near the, you know, if you kind of your Wockens or your Spellthorn, where they've really gone kind of all guns blazing on sort of taking a lot of debt. So in terms of districts in in Leicestershire, they've all been pretty sensible. There's nobody who's a real kind of outlier, sort of that you you worry a lot about. A couple of them suffer because they're they're very small, but in some ways, reorganisation helps to solve that. So so the due diligence we've done, there's no kind of immediate red flags, apart apart from the fact that we know that by the time reorganisation comes along, the savings requirement is going to be even more challenging off the back of funding reform.
Hey, Mr Malaney?
Uh thank you, Chair. Um I think, looking through the figures, there's still lots of uncertainty as to whether these how accurate these figures will turn out in reality. There are predictions and estimates and things can change. We know from government financial predictions of of schemes and things that they change often. And we know here at the County Council from the M T F S that figures can change regularly as well. And I I I do have my concerns that uh there's perhaps a slant on the report in favour of the county's chosen option and against the uh the borough and district's option. I mean, in terms of savings, I mean, obviously, we only had this paper very uh just before the meeting. But I mean, on on the savings analysis, it does, for example, looking at it, say, um one of the savings is um from the three unitary impact, lower savings, more members required for for two authorities. But then you look at the figures, and I think it was, you got 90 councillors for the north and south unitaries and 85 for for one single unitary authority for Leicestershire, which isn't a massive difference um based on those figures. So I I'm I'm concerned that, uh you know, there may be a a slant to these figures and that it's trying to see the county's chosen option in the most positive way possible and perhaps putting the borough and districts in the least uh positive way possible.
Can I just correct, because I was going to correct what's on here, the number of councillors? If you read the north city south, it actually says in there that the south would have 70 councillors and north would have 72. Though I think that's.
Um I've got that in my presentation, it's in my speech.
Okay, so that your your one that you've put in is higher councillors, so just to correct that. So you can pick up the other comments. Just get to Simone, then I'll come to you, Mr.
I g- I guess just to to give some assurance, what we have tried to 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 do through the modelling is is link back to other business cases and look at the assumptions that that the other areas have made in their business cases to make sure that what what we've got is is reasonable and it is objective. Um and and that's why we've taken the approach we have in terms of the 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 consultancies that have been involved. And so we've, where we've, while we've made assumptions about savings in the different categories, we have then done some comparisons to other business cases to make sure they look reasonable, but also also benchmarked against existing unitaries to make, again, make sure that kind of where we're looking at then at what the overall kind of budget for the new authority will be and what the overall kind of cost per head will be after the savings have been taken out, that 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 looks reasonable compared to unitaries that already exist with a similar population. So we know that we've got that kind of consistency in that benchmark against um o- other other organisations that are already in existence.
Did you want to come in on this point, Mr Harrison?
Yeah, just to really assure Michael that two major companies have came to the similar conclusion, having looked independently. There's nobody telling them what to do, they're looking at the facts and figures as available to them as they are available to us. On numbers of people, whatever, the information is given to them, and they've come back with their conclusion. So I would hopefully allay your fears that there's been some jerrybandering or we're playing around with numbers, because that wouldn't be what we could do as a county council, that would be outrageous. And we've never behaved badly in over 100 years. So I don't suppose we're going to start trying to do things like that now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, you're next.
Cheers. Thank you very much, Chair, and apologies, I can't join you uh in person. Uh I I just want to um concentrate on some of the finances still, because I think I think we've been clear on uh on some of it. So the council tax increase, for example, um as was mentioned, the districts have put it in, and they've put it in for 10 years, I believe. Um but in our case here, there's nothing saying what council tax uh might be, what the increase might be. And and by council tax harmonisation as well, I think that's been mentioned already. But there's nothing in this presentation about council tax harmonisation unless it's uh coming later on. So my first question is, is are we underplaying it? So for example, government want us to give a vision of what local government's going to be post this reorganisation. And at the moment, I, in this, in these few slides, I don't see a vision of what Leicestershire is is proposing. Is it more of the same? And if it's more of the same, will we think government's going to buy that? And if it's not more of the same, then where is that vision in in this in this document? Or will it be in the business case, which we, in honesty, I share, uh feel, uh Mr King's uh uh concerns that we should be seeing this. And that's what we should be scrutinising uh today. Um so that's my first question. And the second one is round staffing restructure. Um obviously, if we're looking at a whole county unitary minus the city, then that's a lot of staff that are, we're going to be taking over and a lot of services that we are going to be taking over. So what's the percentage of staff that we're going to lose that that 6.8 million pound is referring to? Uh so I'll leave it to those two questions for now, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to pick them two up?
I'll have a go at some of those. I think the vision stuff will more come later when Rosemary gets into kind of the the sort of the more service type aspects of of it. In terms of council taxes, as I said previously, that's that's not a saving, that's just a sort of a a policy decision by the sort of a future administration. So in terms of the districts, even in their case, the council tax doesn't feed into their 40-odd million pound savings. It's just, it's just them trying to articulate how they see the future. So council tax isn't a saving for any business case sort of nationally. In terms of harmonisation, we haven't, we haven't included it, it's kind of quite a technical kind of a thing, it's all, I mean, for members' benefit, it just comes from the fact that every district has a different level of council tax. When you've got a future kind of unitary authority, you just have to equalise all those at one level. Historically, people have tended to go from the average, so it just neutralises it out. So some people have a a little bit of an increase, some people have a bit of a a reduction. But we haven't included it primarily because it's a kind of a a matter for the sort of the future unitary authority to make that, make that decision. And Rutland does create a bit of a kind of a, an interesting dilemma on this, because they've got a. got a significantly higher level of council tax than we do in the county. So it's probably not unreasonable to expect some of the savings will go to kind of council taxpayers just because of that differential with Rutland.
And we'll pick up the other point later on in the slides. Okay, Mrs Bottomley's next.
Thank you, and thank you for inviting me to be here, I really appreciate having the opportunity to take part. I do just want to echo quickly what quite a few of the people have said, it's been quite hard to scrutinise with such little detail. And I know we've talked a lot about the council tax, but it's been very hard to ask for feedback when we haven't given residents or parish councils or anyone any details about what might happen. And these are the kind of things that are actually really important and that people want to be able to have an say on. I would also like to ask, and apologies if this is the wrong point, or we can come back to it. Some of the smaller budgets that are currently under the remit of boroughs and districts, how are we protecting those when they are kind of swallowed up into a much bigger unitary authority? When we will also have the responsibility of things like social care and SEND, which obviously have a big discrepancy between funding and need? And how can we assure people that they're not going to kind of fall by the lake because the black hole is going to swallow up the bigger issues? Thank you.
So the similar question came from the voluntary sort of groups engagement and obviously is, as you've pointed out, it's a key concern for them that suddenly it doesn't just get lost in it. I suppose in some ways your sales are kind of a bigger level of assurance on that, because as officers, we could never just kind of arbitrarily cut kind of services, you're always going to have to go through that sort of member level decision making. I mean, to give you some assurance, the savings of the business case aren't predicated on any of that sort of reduction of frontline services, it's all about trying to take away the sort of the back office. So you can imagine as this sort of project goes through, so there's no immediate pressure on them to actually then to try and look to the sort of the frontline to make savings. And the other point I'd make on this is kind of the, in some ways, having a unitary is a better position than we are in at the moment, because governments made a very clear decision that they're going to sort of restrict the level of funding going into districts and boost it to sort of upper tier authorities. We saw that in the last local government settlement, the districts got an awful settlement, they were basically cash flat, which meant that, ironically, the council tax raised last time, my districts just went back to government. Governments clearly signal through the funding reform, they're going to keep on that path. So the districts are going to get disproportionately squeezed over the next few years. So that valid concern that you've raised, I think actually the unitary authority will be in a better position to protect those sort of small vital kind of sums of money that may not seem a lot in the scheme of things, but actually to the voluntary groups are really important compared to if you leave it to Westminster to just squeeze the districts and pump all the money into social care. So I think you can get that better local decision making.
I've got Mr Pollan, Mr King on my list, but I'm going to go to people that haven't spoken first. Dr Bloxham, you're next.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I mean, I understand why we haven't got much information, but it would have been good to get a little bit more on the assumptions that are fed into the model. So I agree with some of the other points made there, although I appreciate we do have challenges that the other parties don't have. This is financial, but maybe, we've been talking about the transition costs. One of the big issues everybody's concerned about is the city expansion and one of the justifications for that is that, you know, the council tax base and the Leicester City finances not being sustainable. The district case is saying, you know, they've looked into it and the city finances are sustainable, so that argument's blown out of the window. Have we been looking into that too? I mean, they're talking about fairer funding and things that have essentially solved the problem the mayor raised back at the start of the year. Is that something that we've been looking into and should we be putting that into our business case? If so. And then you touched on Rutland, and this is where it'd be good to see all the assumptions and things, because I think in the district case, they rely a lot on Rutland being a unitary authority and having the expertise to take over for the North Leicestershire part, SEND and adult social care and all the rest of it. I mean, I was concerned that might be a little bit optimistic, is that something you would agree on? Could you expand on that a little bit? Also, we talk a lot about economies of scale, but are there any concerns about diseconomies of scale, sort of bigger organisations being more bureaucratic, less nimble and so on? There aren't many unitary authorities, I don't think there's any technically unitary authorities that are as big as we would be. So is that something we're concerned about, that that might be a weakness? Thanks.
Just picking up on your Rutland services, I know through my previous roles that we deliver a lot of Rutland services through, let's say, adult social care and children's social care. So Rutland's too small to employ those specialist services, so they pay us to deliver for them. So for me, it is a big risk of relying on Rutland, because we have the expertise here, Rutland don't, but I'll let officers pick up the rest of the other stuff.
I can stab, or probably pass to sort of the chief officers about that sort of that Rutland unitary and that sort of expansion out, because they're close to sort of those frontline services, which I think is the point you'd be touching on. In terms of fair, excuse me, in terms of fair funding, that's a really good point. And it is one point then, sort of the fuller business case we are making about governments, governments set out with fair funding before the sort of the reorganisation agenda. And the idea was to make sure that kind of how funding's allocated across the country is done in the right way. Not all city councils, but most city councils benefited in the last settlement when the government turned their recovery grant and they deliberately skewed the money towards sort of the urban areas. We're seeing that repeated again in the sort of the funding reforms, although I would stress, we don't have the final figures for the funding reforms, we don't have the kind of, and governments still could be, tinker with it quite a bit. But I'd agree on that sort of sentiment, you know, that is the better mechanisms for sorting out non-sustainable authority, rather than reorganising every blooming authority in the county just to change around administrative boundaries. Because the other point that seems to be getting lost at the moment is that in part of the funding reforms, government assume all the council tax that you can raise in that area. So even if we gave basically the city more houses, well, the government equalises that away anyway and just assumes that kind of, you know, you're raising that and they take it off the sort of the grant that you need. So it gets cancelled out. So it's, in my view, it's a very expensive exercise in moving administrative boundaries without any obvious resulting sustainability increase, because to your point, that should be taken care of by funding reform.
I think a lot of have seen in the news in city recently about employment cases of tribunals of paying out for waste disposal. So a lot of city money seems to go out in legal fees, well, at least certainly recently. So for me, it's a bit more of not handling the money that they've got very well, in my opinion, compared to that. I think Mr Fowler wanted to come in on this point as well.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Just to address one of the last points that Dr Bloxham made about the bureaucracy, because I think that is a valid concern with diseconomies of scale. But to my mind, because of the nature of the current system with districts and the county having different powers and different preferences when it comes to various decision making responsibilities, I think having it collectivised under one umbrella and rather than being departmentalised, people should be pulling from the same side of the rope, which in turn should reduce bureaucracy, I would imagine so. And it seems that the business case supports that as well. So I think that whilst a valid concern, has been addressed and should be resolved.
I think we'll come back to your point about services when Jane and John, when we do sort of the more of the expert afterwards, if that's a, do you want to come back when we do sort of more of the service and, I was going to come back on the Rutland question specifically, because it's less broad than the service. I think in response to your question, I think it's the right question to ask, I think there's some optimism of Rutland's ability to be able to think about the scale of delivery that would be required across the north area. And I know from the district's bid that they refer to utilising the expertise of an already existing unitary. And they're right, Rutland does have the same, so the DCS from Rutland has the same statutory responsibilities of me, but doesn't have the economies of scale at which we are used to delivering across. And it's very different to lead across a population of currently 150,000 children to what is currently being delivered in Rutland. So I think there's some optimism there. I think, and as Mrs Taylor said, from a children's services and adults' point of view, we already deliver a number of services for Rutland, because it doesn't make sense for them to deliver it at the scale that they need to. So we deliver their youth offending services, because it would cost too much for them to run their own youth offending service. So we're already working collegiately with them to deliver some services and actually looking in a bit more detail about that with the new reforms. I think the other bit I would just add is I think the points I've made are demonstrated by the detail within the district business case that lacks any strategic oversight of what is required to deliver children's services at scale. And it talks about a heavy focus on prevention, which is the right thing to be doing, but actually it doesn't take account of some of the real complexities that we're delivering at scale across the whole of Leicestershire, that we've been doing, you know, for the whole time we've been delivering around children's services placements, some of the challenges we've got of SEND as well. So I think the detail within the district bid demonstrates that over optimism of relying on Rutland in that sense.
Perhaps I should have said this before, but just for the record, if I go back to March, admittedly under a different administration, but the interim plan which the council submitted was signed off by the cabinet. And not aware, any of the interim plans from the districts were signed off by their cabinets, they were just sent by officers with the authority of leaders. Since then, we've had, as I mentioned, two long debates in the county council about reorganisation. Again, I'm not aware there's been any debate in any district council about reorganisation. And what the districts published two weeks ago had the proviso in it, that it is now subject to the governance processes of the district councils in Rutland. So I'm not sure we're in too difficult, too different a position. I don't know whether what the districts published two weeks ago has been scrutinised at all, in response to Mr King. And I'm aware that I've read media comment from some district council members that they've been kept apart from any consideration in their district council about what's happening on reorganisation. So although we are perhaps slightly behind because of the politics of Leicestershire County Council, I don't believe we're all that different from some of the districts. And I think some of the criticisms which has been directed at us is slightly unfair.
I know as a Charmwood Borough Councilor, that he went to scrutiny this week at Charmwood, so I know Charmwood have.
So it's a week, when are we different?
They published their plan a couple of weeks ago, but it actually was scrutinised by their scrutiny commission on Monday, so they have had it. Dr Hill, I think you're next.
Thank you Chair. I share Counting King's disappointment in that we've got a PowerPoint presentation to work from. I missed the briefing to the group and have had no follow-up, because I was on holiday, didn't want to drag my county council laptop halfway across the country, where it might have got stolen. I agree with Dr Bloxham, assumptions if you're doing a model are the key thing and that's what you want to get into. The other thing they haven't talked about is sensitivity analyses either. So that whole thing just makes me deeply uncomfortable looking at this. But I've one fundamental question underlying it. The way this is written, it implies city expansion. Now, if that is imposed upon us by those above, fine, but is the position of this council, we accept city expansion or we're going to oppose it? And if it's imposed on us, fair enough. My final point is, the new authority isn't us taking over the districts or the districts taking over us, it is a new thing. So look at the expertise by bringing people in from wherever, whoever it is. I'll leave my other comments until we've dealt with the second half of the agenda, but I'm concerned, the way this is written, it implies we accept city expansion and I don't think we do. Thank you Chair. Do you want to answer that leader?
Indeed, thank you. No, we're quite clear strategically and in our policy, we oppose city expansion. So that's the basis of how we go forward this programme.
Okay. Yeah, you haven't spoken yet.
So I'm really interested in what you're saying there leader, because what's characterised, and go back to the report in September, the cabinet, is that, you know, inevitably there isn't going to be any agreement between the city and the county and the district. There's no chance of that, I think it said, and I would agree with that unfortunately. But there is one thing in common with the districts, isn't there? And that is, we don't want city expansion. To my mind, that's always been my worst case nightmare scenario, to be honest. And we're going to talk about services later and hopefully look at service provision and standards of services that people in the county enjoy now will be subject to very different if they were pushed into the city, forced into the city by their will. But if there is some common ground about not wanting city expansion, why can't we get, at least get together with the districts on that and make a common statement or send a letter alongside our different bids, which says we agree on this? It seems quite fundamental to me that we could say that. And I'd like you to take that away and think about that, because, you know, it's in no one's interest, we're going to have all these separate bids, yes. But where there is common ground, surely we should try and bring that out.
Do you want to answer that now? I mean, it's a field of thought.
Thank you. Originally, when they're invited to the joint model.
I don't really want to know about what. We've got about a month left. We've got a month left, do you hear, to get this in, 28th of November. But if we're going to rake over everything that's happened in the past and somebody said this before the election, we're not going to get anywhere.
No, but we've had to contact, we've tried to make contact and they have, we've had no feedback. I've had no feedback, I've had promises from every leader, yes, I'll talk to the chief and we'll do it, and I've never had any.
Mr Mulaney will take it back to his leader, I'll take it back to the leader at Harborough and we'll get, if that's what you're saying, we'll get that sorted in the next 48 hours.
Okay, let's give that aside and leaders can decide that themselves. Right, so.
Can I just say that? I think I've been consistent, going back to a meeting of the commission in March, when I said that it was worth taking notice of what the government's invitation letter said. It specifically gave the option to a unitary like Leicester or Rutland to extend its boundaries. So you had to address that, you couldn't just ignore it. I stand by my view, which I expressed before, and I don't think the districts have really addressed that. I think it's important and my advice to the county council is that its final submission should address the consequences of the county if there was to be a city boundary extension. You can't just say we don't like it, you need to say what the impact on the county would be, which is one of the reasons why we've done the modelling and why I think it's been need to be clear now what that impact would be in real terms. It's something to be taken fully into account, not just disregarded.
Okay, so I've got no one else that has.
Sorry, just to add as well, I think one of the other pieces of learning from yesterday's announcements is that the government are determined to see cities have their boundaries extended, and particularly some of the smaller cities, who are called the cathedral cities, again, I refer to this at the commission meeting in March, places like Exeter, an existing unitary, Norwich, Ipswich and Oxford, maybe for reasons you'd be more familiar with than I am, but they're political reasons, there's a case to extend those boundaries and the government want to see that happen. So I think if they're looking at the extensions of smaller boundaries, it stands to reason they'll look at the extension of bigger city boundaries as well. So you can't just ignore it. And if you want to oppose it, then it pays to have some evidence.
Okay, I've got no new speakers, so I've just got very quickly Mr King, Mr Pollan, then we'll draw this bit to close and go back to the PowerPoint. So Mr King first.
Yes, thank you Chair, through you, and thank Chief Executive and others for their comments. And so just picking up a couple of things that have been said. So first off, yeah, I am a double hatter, as a number of people are here in this meeting. And I'll say, the process at the other council I sit on has not been, as far as I'm concerned, because I'm in opposition, it hasn't been particularly robust. We haven't really had an opportunity to really scrutinise. That is tomorrow evening's excitement and another presentation, although there is a report with the business case attached. What I do think though, is it would be helpful if someone could give an idea of when we might expect to see the full business case published by county, when we're perhaps able to see that, will we see that before the council meeting? And I understand it's still a cabinet decision to make the submission. I'm also grateful for the clarification that there will be a bit more than just saying we don't like the city expanding, will actually justify why we don't think that's a viable or sustainable model and why they actually can sustain themselves, because if we go back to the Jim McMahon letter from March, he was very clear that whatever we come up with has to consider the city's financial viability post 27, 28. And what is concerning me about that is the districts, what they've done is we've basically kind of ignored it, more or less. And just coming back to this business about council tax and also fees and charges if I can, because again, in the city, the district's proposal, they've laid out a whole plan of how we're going to levy, level up fees and charges. And that's obviously for things like green waste bins and all that sort of stuff. But equally, the council tax, and I appreciate what Declan, what you said, that's a future decision, I get that. But it does seem a lot of the assumptions and presumptions they're making have been based on, well, this is all going to happen, which are all future decisions. But it's hard to look at this without, as Dr Hill said, without the, knowing what the assumptions that have been made in business model and also what sensitivity's been applied. But the question I wanted to ask specifically was, on headcount, what is the assumption we're making about savings on headcount? I mean, yes, I can see the numbers, but what does that mean in terms of a percentage? How many, you know, if we look across, you know, we're into, you know, a new council is going to be created if this proposal got accepted and it would involve the merger of the county, Rutland and the seven districts, what sort of savings in terms of headcount, you know, the deduplication of roles, et cetera, do you think there is going to be? Because I'm not clear from what you've said, what the outline in this is, how many people that is, do you think, apart from obviously senior leadership, because that's a lot easier to work out, because there's only general. Because that's a lot easier to work out because there's only generally one of a particular role at those councils. So I'm just wondering what our assumption is. Because again, going back to the district bit, they're talking about, I think it's less than 4%, which again, doesn't seem to be a very high number for this sort of merger. Or is that just an initial and there might be more later on? I'm just trying to understand what we're talking about. Thank you.
We don't have the, the numbers to hand in, in that sense, but something that we can come back on. But in terms of kind of a, a high level, as you already mentioned, that the senior leadership savings are quite a big driver of the overall savings figure. And then there are saving, staffing savings in relation to sort of service delivery and back office. What we haven't done is translate those into actual numbers. But what we have, but what I would say is that they are in terms of the overall, as you've just said, in terms of the overall staffing budget currently, they, they are not material when, when you compare it to the savings against senior leadership and things like third party spend savings as well. But what we haven't done is translate them into actual headcount numbers because that's not the way that the model's driven. And, and of course, it will depend on, you know, on the precise option in terms of where that, that headcount falls. But that's something that we can come back to in the full business case.
Okay, Mr Pollan, last question, then we'll move on.
Thank you. The leader's very kindly confirmed that the position of the administration is a one Leicestershire model with no expansion of the city. He's been very clear on that point today. Can I ask him when and for what reason the administration came to that view? As that obviously wasn't the case on the 30th of July, when we had the extraordinary full council meeting. So at what point since then has the position changed and what was the reasons for that change? That's the first question. Secondly, if, if it was a direct result of the outcome of the modelling that we commissioned with Leicester City, we obviously only received that quite recently. If that is the case, then clearly the status as a minority administration isn't a, a factor here because we're presumably in the hands of whoever, you know, the company doing the modelling. And third point, in, in terms of, it's been said a few times that the minority administration has caused delays potentially with the process. I think it's fair to say that certainly the Conservative group have been very clear for months now, certainly at the time of the meetings in July, that our position was to support a one Leicestershire council with no expansion of the city. In short, the position that we've got here now. So with that, obviously soon, you know, if, if that had been the position of the administration then or at whatever point that became the position of the administration, clearly working with us would have given us a, a large majority on the council to, to get this through at, at whatever pace we needed. So that's more of an observation than a question. But yeah, my first two questions.
Thank you for the question. It's all around the modelling and the joint modelling. Because it is important, we offered the districts, that was a no. It was obvious we must do something jointly with the city at that stage. And I used it as an element of trying to understand where they were and what they were likely to want, which I was able to visualise. And obviously then I was able to look at members, what losses it'd be and what we could do and everything else. So it was an important role. I took a lot of hammer from the, the whole of the, the council and others. But I did it because I knew it's better to have knowledge than not. And I was able to see and were able to develop our plan, understanding where he's going to go and what he's going to do. He did explain loosely in our last meeting, but it'd be unfair for me to say anything at this stage. But, you know, I understand what he's up to and how we're going to do it and how we can combat it. And that's what we're trying to do now, to understand. I know what I'm dealing with. Now how do we combat it? And of course, some of that may have put delays into the whole system. But to have the knowledge is far better than just saying, no, we don't want it. Because government will probably take a view, so we have to be really careful and active on how we present our case. But it, it was, I can assure you, it was thought out, it wasn't playing around or thinking it's, it's a choice. I've always said in 2019, I was asked by the deputy leader at that time to spearhead this type of operation we're doing now. So I'm familiar with it. I know the rules of engagement and all the dilemmas, all the, the numbers involved. But at that stage, the city wasn't really a contender in all of this. This has just brought a whole brand new dimension and a worry of costs because there now could be cost consequences. So we have to be mindful. That's what I was thinking. Members are fine, but it's going to lose cost and we have to try to be careful how we evaluate that. So how we position our bid is going to be critical. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll move on now. Back to you, Rosemary. Oh, sorry, Chief.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, just to answer your question, I've just spoken to the leader. Our intention was to get the business case ready in time for the county council. With the proviso that we wanted to wait for today, which might make it difficult to get the business case out with the papers next Tuesday. So we could still get them out in time for the council, albeit not with the usual notice. But what I suggested to the leader, which he's agreeable to, to make an offer is that, I know sequencing is not necessarily right, but another meeting of the commission, once the business case is published, if members thought that helpful.
I think the commission would appreciate that, I think, for us to be able to scrutinise the actual business case. So would it be ready? We've got another one on the 10th of November. Is it going to be ready by then? You think it'd be ready by the 10th? Two days before the council meeting, we could scrutinise it then? Okay, so we. I think if we try and get it on the agenda for the 10th within, is there space? Yeah, we've got space at that meeting where we can extend it if we need to, to try and can scrutinise the full business case and we'll obviously invite Mrs Botterley, Mr Mear and Mr Charlesworth as well, if they want to come to that as well. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, back to you, Rosemary, on to the next stage of the PowerPoint. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope that I can sort of answer your question about vision here. When we're talking about sort of like the high quality and sustainable public services, we're looking at kind of benefits of consistency of service, easy access for residents, bringing services together, reducing duplication in the current fragmentation of services that are across two tiers of, of local government. So really, when we're talking about vision, that, that's what we're really focused on. Improving coordination by bringing teams together which are currently dispersed. And really, the, the key aim, of course, is creating a better experience for Leicestershire residents. We believe that all of the options are going to provide a benefit to Rutland residents because it will make services in Rutland more resilient and give residents access to a greater breadth of services, which is some of the points that Jane's already touched on. Looking at the city boundary expansion options, we have stated that there's an additional benefit in that this option meets the requirement of the city for developable land. But it is worth noting that in the cons for this option, we've pointed out the point that Declan's already made, that there's not an actual increase in developable land. It's just moving the administrative boundary so that the land is, is in a different authority to where it is. We're not actually going to be able to create extra land in Leicestershire. Through our proposals, we are just not that magic. So we've identified a risk for our preferred option of, of Leicestershire and Rutland Single Unitary Council, that it's a large authority which could be too remote and not responsive to local needs. But our approach for empowering communities and neighbourhoods, which will be outlined later in the presentation, should address this. And to be honest, this seems to be insignificant compared to the risks of the other options we've looked at, which are around the unnecessary fragmentation and disaggregation of services. And we believe these options would undermine consistency, particularly in social care, where we've got a centrally led, locally delivered model that's been praised by Ofsted. And splitting this model would reduce flexibility and consistency for vulnerable families. It would, splitting and fragmenting services would reduce commissioning power. Adult social care, for instance, currently benefits from scale and commissions from over 300 providers. Fragmentation would weaken this position and complicate certain care pathways. And there'd also be that impact on specialist services. Smaller authorities would struggle to recruit and retain skilled professionals for those low volume, high specialism services that we provide at the county currently. And I'll just point out a couple of additional risks for the city boundary expansion options. It would be inefficient for the city council to take on rural services like county farms for a small rural population. There'd also be a significant requirement to agree transition arrangements in advance of reorganisation. And finally, for the proposal being foot forward by the district councils in Rutland, additional savings would be needed to make up for the shortfall from this model, which will impact how much can be reinvested into frontline services. Talking about examples of service benefits, I'm just going to pick out a few here because of course the chief officers are all here and they'll answer any detailed questions on the impact of services. I wouldn't want to presume to talk too much on their behalf. But one of the examples we've given is housing, where we'd hope to improve infrastructure through a coordinated approach to planning. There'd be a centralised and consistent approach to planning policy in contact with developers. But we'd look to retain locally based planning officers to ensure that local knowledge and expertise is kept. And then when talking about active wellbeing, there's a real opportunity here to develop an active wellbeing system that thinks beyond leisure centres to ensure that there's access to green and blue spaces. That adequate walking and cycling routes are developed. Physical activity is embedded into settings such as schools, care homes and businesses. And that physical activity becomes a priority for a variety of partners. In terms of waste management, a single unitary council would create a single streamlined system for curbside collections, trade waste and related services. And again, that, that clear part of our vision, that residents would benefit from clear, consistent information and would only need to access one point of contact for all their waste management needs. Finally, I'll just mention business support, the removal of the current enforcement overlap and the creation of a one stop shop for compliance advice for all of Leicestershire and Rutland businesses. We think would be a real benefit of our proposal. Moving on to unlocking devolution, I think the praise of all the options are fairly similar here because they're all around alignment with partners. If we're looking for devolution on an L L R footprint, all of the options we're looking at are for unitary authorities on an L L R footprint. The single unitary for Leicestershire and Rutland does have the advantage of not including any complex boundary changes, which means devolution can be delivered more quickly and with minimal disruption. We've highlighted that in the single unitary for Leicestershire and Rutland, Leicester City's growth and financial sustainability remains unaddressed. But you can equally see that we've highlighted for the city boundary expansions that the county's sustainability could be affected by the increase in size of the city. So it's a bit of a, a kind of a juggling act really. They almost cancel each other out, don't they? For the district council's option, we've highlighted the smaller population size and the potential for smaller unitary authorities to lack capacity to deliver the full range of devolved powers. And it'll also make decision making more complex because you've got three councils involved in the strategic authority rather than just two. Finally, it's worth noting that both the city boundary expansion options and the district council's proposal entail the splitting of services around transport, economic growth and skills that ultimately will transfer to the combined authority anyway. In terms of community engagement and neighbourhood empowerment, the praise of the Leicestershire and Rutland Single Unitary are largely the same as those for the city boundary expansion options. I've covered the area committee proposal in more detail on the next slide, so I won't go into that here. We recognise the importance of preserving community connections and identities to maintain residents' sense of belonging to Leicestershire and Rutland. And we think this is the only option that really enables this. All options cover a wide and diverse geographical area, so this has been identified as a negative for all of them really, so again, it's cancelling each other out. For the city boundary expansion options, the other risks are mainly to the rural areas that would become part of the city. And that their priorities and issues may be overlooked when they become a small part of a large urban authority. It's also worth noting the city doesn't currently have any parish councils, so there'd be no option to devolve services within that. Looking at the district council's proposal, we've highlighted that the creation of new arbitrary boundaries that sort of split Leicestershire in half would damage Leicestershire's identity, that they lack economic coherence and that they'll fracture current community ties. There's also a risk that splitting the county would hinder the ability to coordinate efforts across communities. We currently have networks and partnerships that are countywide, such as the Armed Forces Network, the Nature Network and our volunteer networks. And we fear that we could lose their countywide reach and impact. You've got the risk of separate authorities resulting in inconsistent service deliveries with variations in accessibility, quality and resourcing. Communities might therefore experience inequity with some areas being under-resourced or unable to pursue locally identified priorities due to more limited budgets or policy constraints. And obviously, two authorities would necessitate parallel governance structures, so there'd be some duplication there. Finally, the fragmentation of the county could dilute the influence of local communities, making it harder for residents to shape overarching policy or advocate for shared countywide priorities. Moving on to the proposal for area committees, the proposal is that they'll act as locally focused bodies who will be able to influence decisions and drive community led change. To ensure value remains a priority, we don't propose that they'll be responsible for direct service delivery, but they'll hold an important oversight function, ensuring areas are delivered effectively and that they'll reflect the needs of their local areas. For example, this includes supporting initiatives around community safety, health and wellbeing, preventative approaches, which are increasingly recognised in the NHS neighbourhood health service models as effective. Area committees will meet in each local area to ensure they're accessible to members of the public and to local partners. Membership will comprise elected members, local partners, town and parish councils and members of the public. Although we'll leave the exact composition up to each local area. We hope that those smaller voluntary sector organisations that highlighted to us when we were engaging with them, that they feared that they might get left behind by this proposal. We really hope we'll be able to bring them into the area committee model so that they don't feel like they're getting left behind and that they'll still have a voice. We also plan to work with local areas to determine the geography for each area committee. We have identified some building blocks, but these aren't set in stone. The thing we think's important is that they reflect natural communities in terms of economic and local interests and identities. Electoral divisions will clearly be form part of the building blocks. Local delivery arrangements, such as health and social care integrated locality teams, primary care networks and neighbourhood policing units, parliamentary consistencies and the need for broadly similar sized populations. In terms of the parish and town council proposal, they'll be free to choose a level of involvement they have in delivering dissolved, devolved services through a menu of options, including the option not to be involved at all. Any additional services which parish and town council deliver will need to be in line with the new unitary council's policies and priorities. And then local models of delivery. We want to provide options to strengthen communities through devolving services to community groups. The new unitary authority will build on the county council's strong track record of devolving services, such as community managed libraries, flood wardens and the snow warden scheme. We think strengthening and building on these existing volunteering programmes will help to ensure the new unitary council is connected to local communities and supports them to thrive. In terms of democracy and governance, the principles for the model for a single unitary for Leicestershire and Rutland are to still have the cabinet and strong leader model of governance in line with what the government's currently recommending. That all councillors will act as community leaders and that they'll bring that experience into strategic decision making. And that will provide clear and simple structures for local partners to engage with. And that's a clear benefit of, of this new proposal. It should be easier for partners because there'll be one set of councillors for Leicestershire. For the city boundary expansion options, you can see that the risks relate to the rural population, which would become disenfranchised if their needs are overlooked. And it's also worth noting that the demographic characteristics of residents on the city border are much more similar to those of the county than of the existing city. For the district's proposals, the risk relates to the ability to make strategic decisions in a smaller authority that only covers half of the county. There's no real geographic or economic coherence to the new authorities to bind them together. And finally, any services that aren't disaggregated will require complex joint committee arrangements to be set up. For the number of councillors per option and focusing on option two being our preferred option, we're proposing 90 councillors. Initially, I think, and in the interim plan, we talked about 110 for a Leicestershire authority because we weren't talking about just doubling up the number of councillors. We've since have had, had advice from the Boundary Commission that over 100, you'd have to have a really strong business case to justify. that over a hundred, you'd have to have a really strong business case to justify. And to be honest, I couldn't see that we had a strong enough business case for over a hundred councillors to go against what felt like really clear advice from the Boundary Commission. So I went back and I had a look at it. And I thought that if we had six thousand five hundred electors per councillor, that would meet the Boundary Commission criteria, which are effective governance and decision making, enabling councillors to share accountability and scrutiny roles and ensure effective representation of residents and preserve community identity. And the Boundary Commission will come in and conduct a review later in the process anyway, I think between the first election and the second election. And ideally, you want to get it as close to what the Boundary Commission are going to come out with at the end, at the start, if you see what I mean. Because if you go for, say, a hundred and twenty councillors and then the Boundary Commission say you actually need eighty, but you've just set up a load of governance arrangements with a hundred and twenty councillors, you could find it really difficult. So that's why I went for that six and a half thousand. And I've stuck with that for sort of all six of the options. And and that's why I've got the numbers of forty five for north and south. But actually, I have become aware that the district and Rutland business case has seventy councillors for South and seventy two for the North. So we will need to make some tweaks to our business case to reflect this. And I'll just talk a little bit about the engagement feedback. So we met in total in our short engagement period, we met with around a thousand people. And we had over seven hundred online responses to our free text box that we put on the website. We held a focus group of twenty people, which had constructive and insightful discussions. We held that on a Saturday afternoon here at County Hall. And we had seventy attendees at a workshop for parish council class. We had thirty five people at a workshop for voluntary and community sector and around eight hundred staff across two stations of briefings for staff. And and the key themes from that engagement, and general relief that the city expansion's not been backed. And the importance for Rutland and the smaller communities to have a say in the new arrangements, questions about the role of area committees, and requests for clarity on devolution and some concern about the future of local elections. And the voluntary and community sector feedback was really strong about concerns that smaller charities may be overlooked in a larger structure. And we have really tried to respond to that in the draft business case. And there was support for easier access and less bureaucracy, and fewer handoffs, emphasis on cooperating with the NHS, and fears of council tax increasing reduced local services. And an example was given that district councils sometimes currently hold free events in parks. And staff concerns are mainly around job security and employment impact. So just to conclude, that based on the evidence gathered so far, the administration is proposing a single county unitary for Leicestershire and Rutland as its preferred option. But as John and the leader have already said, the final proposal will identify the consequences for the county of the extended Leicester boundary. And county council and the city council have both agreed the best option for reorganisation as one unitary for the county in Rutland and one for the city. And the administration is aware that reorganisation will not fully solve the overall financial challenge facing the authority, but it will help.
Thanks, Rosie. I think just before I open it up to members, it would be good to hear from the the chief officers that are here. And I'm particularly interested in social care adults and children as well as our biggest budget. So just a little bit about what deaggravation of the services would look like, even with the city expansion of the districts. And some of those examples, so Rose, we mentioned those specialist services, you're able to actually put it into context of what sort of services you would be classing as specialist and how difficult that would be to do in a a smaller one. And just also picking up about that I haven't seen much of the city one, but obviously the districts is very much about the prevention agenda. And it reads as though we've not doing any prevention, they've not took any notice of our draft adults. It's not draft now, our adults and community strategy, our health and wellbeing strategy and our early help strategy. So we're doing a whole raft of work around prevention already, but the district's bid didn't seem to take any notice of that. So why I'm questioning their their savings because we're already doing most of that work anyway. So if I start with Jane and John first, and obviously we'll go to Mike and if they want to, and I think, and then we'll open up to questions if that's all right. Jane?
I start. Okay, thank you. So and just a few things from children's services point of view. I think we need to be mindful that and children's services are already delivered across the entire footprint of Leicestershire. So we are well and versed with working across the county area. And as members will be aware, we were recently judged to be outstanding in terms of the consistency of delivery of services for our children across Leicestershire. So we we deliver a centrally, central leadership, locally delivered model. So we have teams in localities who know their communities, but are led centrally. It's it's a good reduction of cost. We have a single D C S. And there is a requirement that every top tier authority has a statutory D C S. And whilst the district business case does make reference to the fact there are three, we would need to be mindful that councils of the size of which the district are proposing would attract a salary for a chief officer, particularly D C S level, that far exceeds that that is currently given within Rutland. And so so part of the challenge around disaggregation would be around the increased leadership costs. So we would need and two chief officer level directors of children's services across both unitaries. And and the salaries would need to be commensurate with the level of responsibility that 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 individual has as well. And the the other benefit currently of a single unitary in terms of how we deliver already in Leicestershire is that consistency of practice of delivery across the whole place area. To your point around the specialist teams, I think it's one of the key and issues really for for disaggregation of of services. So and whilst I talked about, at the moment, we deliver our services across the county, within localities, we have locality teams that deliver our and early help services right through to our children and care services. But what we do have in Leicestershire is is a number of what we call specialist teams. And those teams are designed to deliver services where the numbers of children are far smaller and don't warrant locality teams. It would be not, it's not a cost effective way to deliver. So for example, for for our children who are being sexually exploited or criminally exploited, we have a single team that operates at county level and goes into localities and can move according to need. And it wouldn't be cost effective then to, if if we went into a two unitary model, we'd have to create another of those teams. You've got an immediate additional cost. And and there's some benefit to having that single flexible service that can meet the needs. We do it the same with the youth justice service as well. And I I've talked a little bit about the financial costs and it and it really is crucial. One of one of the things that makes children's services sustainable is really good, strong, robust leadership at every single level, but have the right span of control. So there would be an immediate duplication of costs if you went to a disaggregated model. And not just the D C S, but the assistant directors, the heads of service and all of the layers that are required to make sure there's good rigor and delivery for children. I think your your point around prevention is a really important one. And I note that the district bid talks a lot about prevention and hasn't seemed to recognise some of the complexity of delivery that goes on within children's services around our high cost placements, our issues that we've got currently around send, but also the fact that we are, we hold the statutory safeguarding lead and therefore have a number of responsibilities, none of which is covered within the district bid. But you're right, it does make quite a lot of note to prevention. And I think here that there's a really important link between the sustainability and retention of prevention services alongside the statutory services. Because prevention services help the reduction of statutory services. And when they're delivered in isolation, they are far more vulnerable because there is less ability to link them to the impact on higher cost services and and prevention of demand. So one of the benefits of joining up district services with those that are delivered at county level is that we we will have a much stronger grip of that really beneficial prevention work that the districts are already involved in. So I I'm interested in the admission of of the understanding of the prevention elements because the districts are heavily involved in delivering part of our prevention early early health strategy as we would want them to be. And so I think the merger of the services for across districts and county actually strengthen the prevention because we can work much more closely around some of those impacts on higher cost services. I think the other bit that would, I would just want us to be mindful about around disaggregation is that we hold a sufficiency duty across the whole of Leicestershire. So we've built schools in places to meet our sufficiency duty that mean that children and don't have to travel far for mainstream schools, but also they are, they have choice. So our our families have choice, we have the right schools and sufficiency. Again, if we split onto a two unitary footprint, we would then need to be mindful of our sufficiency. And whether or not we have the right, because our sufficiency would be judged on a north and south basis as well. And then finally, the only other point I would want to make is that we need to remember that demand is not consistent across the whole of Leicestershire. And we currently manage that demand by moving services around as as according to need. So if we were to move to a two unitary model, my concern would be that the demand in the north would be far greater than that in the south, but the funding would be the same. So what what you would have is a less of an ability to deliver some of the and services that we can do at the moment where we can move around according to demand in the north area, whereas in the south area, we 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 know there is less demand for some of the things around residential placements for the complexity of children. And and the costs are lower, but the numbers of children are the same. So we'd need to be really mindful about the fact that whoever then is responsible for running the north will have a bigger financial challenge in terms of delivering against the demand that they've currently got.
Thanks, Jane. That's really useful. John, come to you next.
Yeah, thanks. Very similar, really. And as you'd expect, I suppose, in terms of adults and children's social care. So many of the issues are the same. On that latter point, the analysis that we've done again shows that uh, demand in the north would be higher than demand in the south if you had a two unitary solution for Leicestershire. And coupled with that, income in the south would be greater than income in the north. So the disparity gets bigger because and that's all to do with relative affluence and demand on services. It's a bit like the sort of the city county issue in terms of council tax. You get that same issue playing out within the county. Um, in terms of costs, again, as Jane's sort of alluded to, where we currently have a single management team covering the whole of the of the county, we would inevitably require two. And if we had a north, a south, that will just double up all the costs above sort of head of service level. So the top three tiers of management would be doubled. Um, because you have to have two directors. Uh, where we currently have three assistant directors, you'd need at least four. We'd want at least two in each of the of the new unitaries as a minimum. And then where we have uh, six to eight heads of service, you'd be looking at ten to twelve and it kind of filters through. And in terms of services, again, services are not necessarily spread evenly across the county. So um, many of our services, so if you look at care homes, for example, thirty percent of our care homes are in one district. Um, there would therefore be districts where there would be a positive provision. And there would largely be the rural districts. And people would be having to travel out of area in order to um, receive a service. That leads into all sorts of issues that we would need to address around ordinary residents where the responsibility for funding of of people would change overnight and we'd have to look at where people were placed and where they were originally from and where they and get into all sorts of issues around that. And in terms of scale, um, similar to Jane, we have what we we have locality teams. So we have mental health teams, learning systems, older adult teams in each of the districts, but we also have countywide services that it doesn't make any sense to run at a local level. Those sorts of services are, tend to be um, where you require a more specialised, more skilled professional, people who are very difficult to recruit. And so we're talking about approved mental health professionals, people who do mental health act assessments, we're talking about best interest assessors who do deprivation of liberty assessments. Um, those you would really struggle to split because then those are quite small. And you you would really struggle to recruit into those posts and part of the attraction that we can gain as a county is that we have a countywide service and that we have all the support around that. And we currently provide those services on behalf of Rutland, for example. Rutland don't provide those services themselves. We provide, they delegate that responsibility to us. Um, as they do for their wider mental health care act duties. Um, in terms of scale, I'm just going back to Dr Bloxham's question, um, to give you an idea and impression, um, we support at any given time, we'd be supporting over seven thousand people, Rutland as a point three hundred. So it's twenty times the the size. Um, we do that with roughly, probably around ten times the staff. So that gives you an idea of kind of where scaling gives you efficiencies. Um, Rutland have twelve care homes, we have a hundred and eighty. Um, so contracts, quality management, safeguarding, all of those issues would need to be thought through in terms of any disaggregation of countywide services. And that gets even more complicated with a with a disaggregation and a city expansion that becomes it, that's much more complicated, actually. The city expansion is a much more complicated process for us because we're disaggregating into the city as well as potentially looking at other areas. Um, I think in terms of some of the benefits of that accrue from having a single authority. Um, certainly the biggest area of benefit for us is around the link between housing and social care. The two are inextricably linked. Um, we currently have to work with obviously seven different housing strategic authorities, so seven different strategies, seven different processes. Um, we have different conversations with each of them. So having a single conversation within a single authority has obvious benefit and having that kind of joined up approach. That's both in terms of access to housing, so suitable housing for disabled people, for older people who might have frailties. Um, it's also in terms of planning and it's also in terms of adaptation. So at the moment, whilst we have a partnership across the county council and the district councils for major adaptations, which works well. Um, it takes a lot of governance and and but it does work as a partnership. Um, what we don't have is an end to end process. So the major adaptations are completed through the district councils on a recommendation from the county council. Minor adaptations are still a responsibility of the county council and equipment is still a responsibility of the county council. What you don't have is an end to end process that allows for a single um, process for whether it's equipment, minor adaptations, major adaptations or potentially alternative accommodations. And so that's just one example where actually you could streamline the whole process and have much more benefit. We know that, for example, in some districts, some districts spend all of their disabled facilities grant money that comes from through the camp, from government, through the county council, passported to district councils. Um, some districts spend all of that and more. Some districts don't spend it to spend their allocation at all and have large surpluses. That tells me that there is need in some areas of the county that's not being met and there's need in another areas of the county have got unmet. So I think all of those areas are things that we could accrue benefit from 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 having a single authority.
Thanks, John. And you pick up everybody's point and point about recruitment and retention, people that do your specialist services, there's not a huge pot to choose from. So getting good staff, and if that happens across the country, there will be a real shortage of those experienced staff to run on the services, which then is a huge risk for our residents, isn't it, and their safety and being looked after. So that's something that needs to be looked at as well.
Yes, just on that point, actually, there is a bit of work taking place nationally around the potential impact at a director level and assistant director level. There's a real concern that we could when we get through the whole of the sort of the L G R process, and we could have another fifty authorities across the country, all seeking to recruit directors and assistant directors at more or less the same time. And at a time when it's likely that a number of existing directors and assistant directors will choose to leave the service. Um, so we might, you know, in the resulting factor of needing seventy to a hundred more people. And it's likely that that's A, going to be very difficult, but B, is going to push up the cost of those.
You'll be getting closer.
So it'll be a recruitment.
Yeah, really good point. Um, Mike?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, much the same kind of issues that Jane and John have alluded to. I was thinking from my point of view, the kind of disaggregation of specialist services would be something like sexual health. Um, where, you know, we have the uh, the the duty to commission a comprehensive open access sexual health service. We do that once across Leicestershire. Could you do that in two separate authorities, north and south? You could. I am not certain that any provider that might come in would have sufficient scale in that geography to to staff because especially there's sexual health kind of doctors in that one. Um, and equally, you know, there is an element of fixed cost, if you like, for the staff, you need Um, and equally, you know, there is a element of fixed cost, if you like, for the staff, you need to run that service. So if you were to go alone in the north and south, yeah, you might be able to afford it. But obviously, there's going to be then less to spend in that quantum of public health grant or, 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 you know, on other things. It's, we all say economies of scale, but it's kind of what does that mean? If you don't have the economy scale, well, something's got to give somewhere else down the line. So cost efficiency and um specialist staff would certainly be a couple of issues. You could choose, you know, you, if I was, uh, you know, in a north city, south kind of proposal kind of stuff. You could use to a kind of joint commissioning arrangement, but then you'll know of old when we've done um stuff within public health where we used to uh do joint services with the city. Inevitably, there ends up being a tension between those two joint commissioning bodies as to kind of who's getting a, a fair crack of the whip. And so the, the tensions, so in the end, we've ended up doing our own thing because this is just being controlled where you want to, to be. And equally, you're then building costs because you're dealing with the tensions and that kind of officer cost of doing all that contract management and the rest of it would be the same. The other issue for me, again, you know, public health receives a public health grant. Um, we're not council tax funded. You'll know of old that we are the eleventh lowest funded um public health authority of the hundred and fifty-three that receive a grant. Department of Health and Social Care have said nothing about how they would allocate grant if there was uh an area with a city expansion or a disaggregation of authorities. But the point being, unless that was done on kind of the amount per head that we receive at the moment, then whoever loses out is going to be left with a very thin um pot indeed, because you know, city uh received twice as much um per head of population funding than we do. So uh, so if I take the city bit, uh, and the sort of imaginary conversation with my city counterpart, I'd be going, yeah, you can have the extra population on the amount we get per head, but he'll be going, I want the same amount, please, on the amount that he gets per head. And that would leave us very short, either in a north-south split or a city-county expansion. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Anne?
Very similar themes, actually, as my colleagues have just covered. Um, you know, we, we obviously deliver countywide at the moment. So that disaggregation is going to bring with it, you know, that last, loss of economies of scale, procurement, you know, eh power, et cetera. So you've got all that. Um, exactly the same in senior management teams, you know, if you were going to two um unitaries in terms of, you know, that duplicating, you need to um shore up there to ensure you could do that across two. Then you've got, in terms of, if you think about, you know, our services or the place-based services within E N T, so you've got the kind of physical asset, aspect of it. Some of that's quite straightforward, you know, you know, you just put up whatever highway length we go to one authority and whatever to another. But some of it's really quite complex. For instance, a street lighting system, yes, you can divvy up who gets which street lighting columns. But we've got one central management system that operates those lights, you know, what we're going to do about that, you know. So you either got joint agreements because you can't do, or you're waiting to the end of contracts to, to bring something new in, quite complex there. And that's what's driving our efficiencies, you know, and our savings, things like having that central management system. We've got um things like, um, you know, we, we do in-house delivery, both across our highway services and our waste services. So it doesn't always just fit, eh, you know, dividing it one by other, because you've got either specialist kit. For instance, our surface dressing, we do all that in-house ourselves. There's one lot of kit for that, but we're really efficient at it. As I mean, preventative treatment, but there's only one lot of kit, you know, et cetera. So we'd have to split all that. Same on the waste side of it. We've got our R H W S. We've got some real specialist kit there that allows those sites to work, but there's not much of it. Eh, and so chances are, you know, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be a street efficiency of dividing between two. There's additional cost there actually to shore up on one side or the other eh for unitaries. Same with things like waste transfer stations. We've got very few of those, but there's one in particular is absolutely key. You know, so, you know, it's not equal, you can't equally split that across any two new authorities, if that was the case. With things like waste, we do all the waste disposal for the county, the waste disposal contracts, they're long-term contracts, twenty-five years or so. And some of those can be, so, you know, there, there's a whole issue around disaggregation, you manage that over time in particular. And same as colleagues, we've got some real specialist teams in there that are very small. So dividing that really isn't going to be feasible, you know, things that I'm thinking about flood team, trying to get flood engineers is really, really difficult. Um, forestry arboreticulturists, always a challenge for us, et cetera, a whole load of specialist skills like that where I think you'd have to shore up. Um, it's not just a case of, you know, using what you've got. In terms of the opportunities, however, you know, in terms of eh being a unitary, you know, one unitary, that opportunity to bring your place-based services together and you're particularly for your growth agenda, I think is quite significant. None of this batting between the highway authority and the planning authority, none of this growth coming forward without your, your services, be it schools, be it highways, et cetera. Because you're in control of your own destiny, et cetera. So there's real opportunities there. At the strategic planning level and at the local plan, I mean, just the individual planning application level. That whole thing about public realm, you know, at the moment, district authorities do things like street cleansing, et cetera, parks. We, we do grass cutting, we do, you know, all the highway stuff in the public realm, massive overlap there. So I think there's some real opportunities in being a unitary there. Similar with things like enforcement, a whole load of things bringing together, you know, air quality, noise, enforcement licensing. So a couple of other um things on the disaggregation that will be really challenging is those more complex, high-cost services. I'm thinking about school transport, S E N, transport, et cetera. Again, you're losing absolute efficiencies. We've had a massive programme of eh delivering savings that are a school transport eh S E N transport. And we've driven really efficiencies there. Um, but you know, disaggregating that again is always going to be a step backward from, you know, that larger unit um as well. Same goes for things like a public transport offer and how we manage that and how we, you know, work with that in, in terms of eh with the operators across a countywide eh provision there to make sure that we are doing the best for a rural county in terms of public transport options there. I think, again, that would be really challenging to disaggregate. I think I'll stop there. It's probably given a bit of a flavour.
I hope that's been useful for members to hear from all the directors about what the impact would be on any of their services. So I've got Mr Poland was first.
Thank you very much. Um, a couple of questions for me, if that's okay. First of all, is there any um actual evidence that people view splitting counties, so in this case having a north and south or whatever it is, um, that would be more local to them and people feel more local than a countywide um model? Now, obviously, we're going through this process now, but this process or, or process alike, it had been going on for donkey's years. I mean, I'm originally from Cheshire and they went through that in nineties, I think. So this isn't new. I'm just wondering whether sort of there is any evidence to suggest that, that people do feel closer to a smaller authority. And, and just to, to make a point on that, I still don't accept that a north and south would feel more local to people. A quick Google search as the f- f- flies puts Loughborough Market Harbour twenty-four miles, slightly less than twenty-four miles apart. And Oppingham and Meesham thirty-four miles apart. So I just don't accept the premise that they are more local. But if we did for the sake of the question, is there any evidence to back that up? That's the first one. Second one for me is around um the boundary review, um, and what would be required there. Um, so presumably a boundary review would be required in time for the shadow elections. Um, we went through this process in Charmwood about twenty-twenty-two or thereabouts when we did new boundaries. And that took, I think, about a part of a year from, from starting to, to finish. Um, presumably it would be a similar sort of time scale. Um, so if that is the case, assuming we get, at what point would we start that process? And I'm guessing there's no chance it would be done in time for May twenty-seven, but for, for shadow elections then.
I'll take the um boundary review question. Um, so, yes, the idea is that we would come up with some interim electoral divisions in time for twenty-twenty-seven. So the Boundary Commission have said that they're keen to work with all the local authorities involved in local government reorganisation. You can use existing parish, district or county electoral division boundaries as your building blocks. You can't use ones that haven't yet been created. Um, but they would work with us to try and come up with an interim solution. And that interim solution, so not a full Boundary Commission review, but just an interim solution, would be what the shadow authority elections in twenty-twenty-seven would be elected to. And then after that, the Boundary Commission would come in and do a proper full review. Anne?
I have a goal, but I don't think I'll be able to fully answer your question. This thing about, do people actually think smaller authorities are more local? I don't know about the evidence of that story, so I can't answer that one. But what I can say in terms of service delivery, I don't think the size of the organisation, if you're bigger, hinders you providing a local service. All my services are delivered at a really local basis. I think there's an issue about how you put the resourcing into that to have the conversation, the communication. And, and just giving an example of E N T at the moment over the last decade. When I joined the authority ten years ago, we were in a completely different place when, on how we discussed, and for instance, with parish councils. Key customer out there. We're completely different in terms of how we engage with them, put far more resource into have regular meetings with parish clerks, annual seminars, now have parish pilots where people, well, parishes, if they're willing, can take on services. You know, devolve services and we work with them on that. I think it's not to do with the size of your authority, your governance. It's how you put your resources into it and how you engage at that local level.
I'm not aware there is any evidence that this sort Mr Poland asks for, not of a reputable sort anyway. I think more relevant is what evidence there is about service quality and financial sustainability of counties which have been split up, Cheshire, Bedfordshire and Northamptonshire. And as Declan alluded to before, in some cases, there's no evidence those have been a success.
There is evidence out there that larger authorities deliver better rated services through Ofsted and T Q C and stuff like that. So there is evidence the other way, that big authorities are more sustainable, offer better services than, there isn't the evidence of lower. And Mike, I think you want to come in on this as well.
And, and again, completely not evidence-based at all, but um a couple of points for me, one of which is, if you ask people in Northamptonshire whether they live, I bet they don't say West Northants or North Northants. And I also can recall going to Old Trafford Cricket and there were people there who wouldn't deny Merseyside existed and they were still part Lancashire, that was seventy-four. More obviously, I, I mean, out of this. More, more obviously, um, and actually to slightly contradict myself, there is something for me about where do people identify, which is vaguely evidence-based, which is actually a bit more local. Um, and so from that point of view, I think that's where the area committee structure comes in. And I know the mask in Rosemary started to think about the names for area committees, but if you think about where do you identify as a local area, it's going to be a bit more hyperlocal than anything Leicester. So actually, it's what sits below it would be more resonant with people. You know, you don't tend to say Leicestershire, you'll say you live in Loughborough, yeah.
Jane?
I, I'm probably going to end up making a very similar point. I don't think I know of any evidence around um what local means. But we, we need to remember what local means is what local means to individuals. And they don't necessarily, they kind of know they live in Leicestershire, so some of them don't because our postcode is Warwickshire, for example. But actually, what local means to individuals differs as well. And I think your point is right around the geography of the proposals. But actually, the, the two unitary proposals make the geography no less great than a single unitary proposal based on the Oakham and Meesham um example that you've given. And I think that the key will be about how we make sure that where we develop those area committees, we understand what that means for individuals to be able to identify with the services within their area.
I've got you down, Mr Miss. We can put your hand down, beat you down the list. Um, Mr Ins.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'd just like to say to uh John, Declan, Simone, Rosemary, uh, the directors, the leader and the deputy leader, what a fantastic job you've done to get us to this position. And I just wanted to, I, I've just been reflecting on what's been said. If we'd come to this scrutiny commission without doing the full modelling, without having the, the full um understanding of the different uh effects of what we were doing, we would have been criticised. Or you guys would have been criticised on that. One uh um criticism is perhaps we should have had this and another scrutiny, which I, I think you've agreed to. And, and I think that's the right course of action, because we're able to give some input at this stage before the final plan is then presented to us and, and, and to the full council. Maybe just a bit too compressed on time. Um, I also wanted to say um about the, the uh the splitting of the county, um, not just duplication but diversification. Can you imagine the north of the county having different services and, and, and facilities than the south of the county? I, I just don't think that's acceptable for, for uh Leicestershire. Um. I've got a question as well. The, the local structures feel quite loose to me just now. Um, I can't feel what it's going to be like in Melton. I don't know what the, the plan is. Um, and I'm just wondering how those plans are going to be formed.
Um, they're deliberately loose at this stage because we just haven't had time to go out and do the kind of engagement that I think is needed in order to form something. I have previous experience of community forums from Leicestershire County Council. Um, we had them, oh, I don't know, like fifteen, twenty years ago. And we imposed a top-down, right, this is your local area, this is your community forum. Aren't we wonderful, giving you a local community forum that you can come and tell us all your issues? And it wasn't particularly popular. The fact that we were saying this is your local area didn't go down well. I can remember endless arguments about names of community forums, whether we've got quite the right geography. So my thought was that this time round, we would try and build it a bit more from the bottom up, that we'd have that kind of basic building blocks that I explained about electoral divisions, parliamentary constituencies, what, what we think are natural communities. But then we'd go out to communities and talk to them and try and, and get something that's going to work for everyone, that, that they've been involved in co-developing. That's my thoughts.
And just to come back on your point about where we've got to, don't forget, we put our interim business case in back in March. It was about pretty much this, just with the added Rutland can join us if they want to. So that basis was already back in March that we've just really built on. So it's not built from scratch. This is a, you know, it's extension of the March one. So it has been quite, you know, there has been a lot of work done prior with evidence is what we submitted in the interim business case, so just to clarify that. Okay, Mr Malane, you're next.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I mean, at Hinkley and Bosworth, we've had numerous debates about this issue and have been opposed to, to one authority for Leicestershire. And as you know, the Lib Dems do oppose one authority for Leicestershire and do oppose city expansion, which is why I brought the original motion to the July meeting opposing city expansion and one authority for Leicestershire. Now, in terms of the engagement, um, the engagement does give key themes that were raised in the engagement. The, the, the slide, but obviously it doesn't say the fundamental point about whether people did actually support one authority for Leicestershire. And all I can say is from my own responses, and other people may have had a different one, but from my own responses, talking to members of the public, there's a fairly overwhelming opposition to one authority for Leicestershire from the people that I talked to. Terms of the boroughs and district plans, I mean, this is a plan that's been put together by boroughs and districts that are run by a whole range of parties. Some of those authorities are Liberal Democrat, Majority, Conservative, Green, Labour, Independent. So you've got a whole range of people who've come together to put a plan together and a proposal together, which I think we should take uh seriously. And certainly, if you look in other parts of the country, uh, we see that Surrey, there's been an endorsement of two authorities for Surrey. So presumably, there is a belief there that that is a practical arrangement that can be delivered. And if you look at the experience of Shropshire, where there was one authority for the whole of Shropshire, the abolition of all districts and boroughs, we've just heard that Shropshire are now appealing to government, I think, for a sixty million pound loan. Otherwise, they face a, a section one-one-four notice unable to meet their spending requirement. So it's not always the case, I think, that two authorities in one county are impossible and one authority in a county uh is a solution to all the problems. And whilst I accept the uh argument of economies of scale, I, you know, you, you could, you could take that adding for an item. You can say, well, you know, uh, counties are more uh better economies of scale than two county authorities, but regions are, are better economies of scale than, than counties. Why not just have regional uh councils based on the whole of the East Midlands on the grounds that they would be a bit more economies of scale? The reality is, local government is there for a point, which is should be about local decision-making. And I do believe that seven hundred and fifty thousand people in Leicestershire is too big to be local. And power has a habit of centralising. And I know there's this proposal for the area committees, but we don't know for sure how much responsibility is actually going to end up with these area committees. And I know in the past we had things such as highway forums here, which ended up being got rid of. And so there is a risk that, you know, there is a centralisation of power and a authority of seven hundred and fifty million, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand people is too big. In terms of the discretionary and statutory services, obviously, a lot of boroughs and districts do currently deliver more discretionary services than other boroughs. And so we can say that, oh, well, you know, the new authority will try and protect those discretionary services that boroughs deliver. But if one particular area delivers a lot more discretionary But if one particular area delivers a lot more discretionary services than another area, you could get a conflict where the people in the area, where there were less discretionary services being delivered by the old borough, are less keen on more money being spent on the area where there used to be a lot more services discretionary delivered in another borough. So I think that, that's a concern as well. And in terms of the risk of city expansion and the uneven scale, I see there is an argument you put here against the district council's proposal, which is population each new unitary is below the optimum size of half a million to support a strategic authority. Well, of course, that is also an argument against the existing boundaries because Leicestershire, at three quarters of a million, is clearly bigger than Leicester City at about three hundred and fifty thousand. So if, if we're going to make that argument, that also opens up the risk of the city expansion, which we say we are opposed to because we know that the public do not want to see the expansion of the city. So I continue to be very sceptical about this proposal and I do think that one authority for Leicestershire would be wrong.
Just a couple of points. Government have come out, I think I might, saying that existing unitaries are not affected by this round of reorganisation, so they're not touching any existing unitaries unless a proposal goes in to make them bigger. And just your point about Surrey, their population is one point two. So really Leicester, Leicester and Rottland is what is one point two here. So that's, I think, why Surrey went for the two option, the government went for the two option. But splitting them into four would have kind of put them down to the size of the, the district's proposal. So just some clarification on those points. Anything you want to add? It was sort of, I can't catch a question in there, really just all your points you're making was, I didn't catch a question, anyone? Okay, Mrs. Bottomley.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. So first of all, we have heard a lot about why we don't think the North City South Plan is good and I take those on board, I totally understand that. I do, you know, I'm sure a lot of people here have a lot of casework that involves people that aren't happy with some of the services we're running here. How do I explain to them or assure them that this plan will improve on what we're currently offering, rather than just a huge amount of kind of hassle and faff to get what they already have and potentially aren't overly happy with? Another question, I know we spoke about, after the consultation, some changes were made. So listening to the small charities that were concerned, were any other changes made on feedback that we got from that consultation? When it comes to parish councils, I know it was mentioned that parish councils could potentially kind of decide how much responsibility they wanted to be taking on. Is it realistic to have some parishes with a much broader remit than others? Will that work practically? And will that start to get complicated where people don't know what parish council they fall under, what, who's doing what? I also noted that there are some areas that aren't currently parished. And in one slide talks about how they're going to work to ensure strong links with the parish councils. But then another slide said if the parish councils don't exist, the unitary will just take over those responsibilities. That, would it not make more sense to work to potentially create parishes in those areas that are unparished? Because otherwise we're going to have residents that have no step between, you know, the residence and then it will be unitary and there's nothing in between. Which for when devolution is supposed to be bringing, you know, democracy closer to residence, that feels like a step backwards, in my opinion. The final one I had was the six thousand five hundred electors roughly. Do we have any kind of data that suggests that's realistic in the way that the villages and things are set up as it currently stands? I know in my division that would be significantly less, but also I am on Charmwood Borough Council and even in my ward, that would be less than I have on my borough ward. So how is that going to work with some of the smaller villages and things? Are we going to have to start carving them up to meet that number of electors per boundary? Thank you.
Who wants to go first?
I'll try and answer you, but they're quite difficult, technical questions. So on the electors, I think, because you can use parishes as building blocks, we're hoping it will work, I suppose, is what I'll say at the moment. And I know that doesn't sound overly reassuring. But we've got time before twenty twenty seven to make sure that we can come up with something that's pretty accurate. It doesn't have to be according to the Boundary Commission, it doesn't have to be perfect first time. It's just an interim arrangement you're essentially electing to shadow for the first year anyway. And the aim is to come up with something that, that works. And we think we can come up with something that works, but it might not be perfect first time. On the parish councils and your question as to whether it's realistic if some take on services and some don't, I think we have to accept the realism that some parish councils will be keen to take on extra services, some of the bigger ones. But equally, that some of them will have no interest whatsoever. And so I think we have to be clear that where parish councils don't take on those services, the unitary authority will provide services and will expect that area committee and that community model to have particular regard to areas that aren't parished. I don't think it's right to force areas to become parished if they're not interested in becoming parished. But equally, if that was something that they put forward, I think we would be supportive. And I think you also asked about any other changes that we've made on the feedback and we are preparing a, you said, we did kind of summary that's going to go into the business case, but it's not quite finished yet. So hopefully when we come back to look at the little this case, you'll be able to see that. I think the other question was about improving on the current service offer.
I've got that one. I don't think there are any guarantees, to be honest. I wouldn't want to sit here and say, oh, I'll be rosy. We have, as, as members of the Adult Committee will know, about one to two percent of people who receive services formally complain every year. I think there will always be a level of dissatisfaction because we don't get everything right first time, every time. I do think though that there is significant risk in desegregation. So I think the risk of dissatisfaction increases simply because of the distraction of doing the work. Because we'd be disaggregating systems and processes, so all of our kind of adult social care databases, all our adult care finance systems, all of that has to be split to two. And we have to separate out individual casework across pieces, whether it's a North City South or whether it's a city expansion or all of that. So I think there is a risk in doing that, which potentially leads to more dissatisfaction. Similarly with sort of the, the cultural and heritage services, you know, library services and all that sort of thing. How we ensure that we've got comprehensive, efficient services across the different new authority areas. So people having to travel further to access a service because they won't lose, necessarily all of those services won't be in local areas. So I think there's a risk that we will have increased dissatisfaction, even whether it's a short term or, or in the longer term. But I can't guarantee that, you know, we'll have less, if that makes sense.
Jane, not Anne, who wants to go first?
I'll just be really quick, okay? I mean, absolutely agree with John in terms of, I don't think there are counties where they will be much, much better. At the end of the day, you know, the unitary authority will be clear on that level of service and core service. And I'm sure it will be doing its best to deliver on that. I think what, where you will see real benefits or, or less dissatisfaction with the public is this constant passing between two authorities. It's not as it's them type thing. I can think of, you know, there's loads of ridiculous situations at the moment whereby, you know, waste is one. Fly tipping on the highway, we'll shift it off the highway onto the verge, then we'll ring the district, they'll come and pick up and then we'll dispose it through the system because that's where the responsibilities lie. All that will go. And I think that will be a benefit for, you know, people out there, less frustration in getting service done.
Jane?
Yeah, I think just to add to that, I don't think we can guarantee, I think John's right. I think one of the things we need to be mindful of is that the services that are delivered by the upper tier authority are in their very nature delivering to those who have more complex needs and therefore the delivery is more context wise. So, and as the department that receives the most complaints, I know in your inboxes you will have the most complaints. I, I, my concern would be it would be exacerbated by the desegregation as we move through it. But actually, those complaints are coming in because we're not able to deliver to the level that people are expecting for various reasons. So I think the key is that we are continuing to improve services in order to reduce complaints. And that would continually throw into the single unitary, but I'm not sure it would, as John said, increase it as well. But actually, we do need to be mindful that the services that are delivered through children's at upper tier level are those for children who are going through child protection procedures, children that we are taking to our care, children who are going through really complex send processes. And they will by their nature then attract far more worries and concerns from families that are going through that.
Mike, did you want to add?
Yeah, just to add to Anne's point, it was in my mind, I suspect there is a deal of people who give up complaining because they just simply do not know who to complain to or who does what. So it's not just about better join up of service and almost making virtue out of a sort of a bad thing. But it might be that it makes it, makes it easier for people to complain because they can see who to complain to. In which case the less kind of, you know, the less intricacy, the, you know, the more simple, the better.
Thank you. Mr. King.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I've been listening very carefully. So there's a number of points I wanted to ask about. So just picking on a couple of things. Obviously during, during, you know, whatever happens, there's going to be some change. And so what I'm trying to understand is what protections are going to be put in place during the transition to whatever authority we end up being, whether we're one Leicestershire or we're a North City South system or, or an expanded city in a smaller one Leicestershire. And Rottland, you know, that, that's something that's concerning, just picking up what you were just saying, Jane. I think that's been a very big concern for parent carers and, and also for, you know, people who are being looked after or older. As to, you know, what's going to happen to their services. But equally with staff, you know, I, I take your point, I was at an LGA seminar with a different hat on and they were talking about this adult social care and the recruitment problem that you're going to hit if you suddenly recreate all sorts of extra jobs in other authorities. So that's one issue. The second issue I want to pick up is about, which obviously a major function of districts is planning. Development management, planning enforcement and strategic planning, local plans, how's that all going to work? Because all the local, all the district authorities, boroughs, were currently all going through various points of the system at the moment of our revising local plans and housing need and all that sort of stuff. So is anyone able to make any comments about that? The stuff about area committees, I mean, you know, if I put my kind of district hat on for a moment, some would say that's recreating a district council. I don't think I quite share that thought. But in the district councils' proposals, they talk about basically creating this neighbourhood service, don't they? And base it on these very exciting things called primary care networks, which no one understands apart from the NHS and the primary. And they're not based on any kind of rational thing, they came up with based on the health of, basically on where GP practices operate over, which is nothing to do with local areas or anything. It's just basically, you know, private businesses where they've decided to set up shop. So I'm a little bit concerned about that proposal. And I'm supposed in a way, I'm also a bit concerned about where the definition of areas are. And I, Rosemary, your point about the have you say forums. And I think one of my colleagues said about highways, we used to have highways forum based on district councils areas. But then the, the real point that's causing me a bit of, you know, most concern at the moment is what you've said about boundaries for councillors and this idea of having a review basically and coming up with an interim proposal. And there's a lot of, a lot of issues with that. So first of all, just thinking of the timing, we're not going to get an outcome from the government until, hopefully by July next year. Because that's what they said at the minute. That doesn't leave us very long with our political party's hat on to kind of A, recruit candidates, B, get ourselves organised and then C, fight elections. So if you're then going to go through a boundary review, reorganise it, all of that, come up with different structures, that then means it, it becomes more difficult for all political parties, not just the Conservatives, but the Dems, Reform, whoever, Greens, whoever else is Stand Labour, whoever else, and also independents, to then work out, well, where are these new boundaries? Where are they going to be? Because it isn't just going to be as simple, which it was in the interim, which was just going to be doubling up of the existing county boundaries. So that's the concern I have is this not going to leave very long. And, and you might think, well, you know, okay, it, it'll be fine, but I, I'm, I'm not convinced about that. So if the idea is that we're going to go with an interim, which is double up the county, the ward boundaries at the moment, divisions at the moment, and then there'd be later on, there'd be then a review, as has happened elsewhere. And I understand that because then that's resulting in a lot of councillors then being taken out of a, I think Buckinghamshire's the one that comes to mind, where that's resulting in a lot of, a lot of people dropping off the council. But I don't think you'd lose that many on a hundred and ten because you'd actually need quite a lot of people to get the jobs, you know, the functions and everything else of the council done. So that's, you know, my feedback on that. And then finally, one thing that hasn't been mentioned at all and hasn't been mentioned in any of the other bids so far is, what's the plan in terms of the administrating authority for, for pensions, the local government pension scheme? Are we just proposing to leave it as it is? Because I think, and again, this isn't very clear in the district's bid, is whether they're proposing to split it and create new administrating authority or whether it's going to stay as, and obviously I've got a vested interest because I'm currently chairman of the Leicestershire Pension Committee. But I'm just trying to raise it and get it on the agenda because it is a really important thing. Because we've got a lot of money under asset and we've got a lot of, you know, a hundred and ten thousand people who are, you know, beneficiaries at the moment, one way or the other, they're either paying in or they're going to be getting their pensions at some point, or they also get them. So it is a really important point and we do need to understand what's going to happen with that also. Thank you.
Quite a few technical questions there that are probably further down the road, to be honest, than what we, we know at this point. But I'll pass it over to you to pick up what you can, if you can.
I can only attempt to answer your question about boundaries for councillors. You make a fair point, there isn't going to be a lot of time. In my honest opinion, there isn't a lot of time to deliver any of this in accordance with the government's timetable, but the government have given us no indication that they're going to change their timetable. But I think that's something we can go away and have a look at. I'm not sure that difficulties for councillors deciding, you know, exactly what the boundaries are is going to be sufficient for a business case to say we need more than a hundred councillors. I'm not sure that's quite going to fly with the Boundary Commission, but I will go away and give it some thought.
Anything else on Declan?
Trying a couple of them. The, the pension side of things, historically, it's always gone to one of the, the authorities. If you look at Northamptonshire, Cheshire, there's always been one authority that take it on for the entirety of the sort of the previous area. Interestingly, I'd never seen this before, Surrey are proposing setting up a new pensions organisation that's completely separate. And that may be a bit of a nod to the fact that there has been some talk of the mayor or strategic authorities taking on pension funds as well. So I think it's one of those, it's going to be watched this space. My guess is that government will come out with some guidance over the next sort of few months about where they see it going. But they, it's obviously a, this sort of the council, single county unitary or the sort of city expansion is straightforward, it just starts with the county council for the, the district council sort of split option. I'd assume it'd go to one of those, but I wouldn't be surprised if government come out with something on the strategic mayor authority side of things. And you mentioned about transitional protection, you'll hear a lot of the phrase safe and legal. And that tends to be where kind of the, the goal for day one is that service continuity does happen. And to help, help with those protections, you know, obviously the single county unitary is the easiest option because you're not having to play around with a lot of the sort of the social care services. You might be aggregating Rottland, but actually you're sort of building out of something rather than trying to sort of break some apart. So that's the, that's one of the reasons it's favoured, it's a lot more sort of straightforward, rather than if you have to focus on what you're going on doing day one. If you are in one of those, either the city expansion or the kind of the, the three unitary options that the districts are proposing, you tend to get an awful lot of transitional arrangements, whether that be sort of shared services or things like that. So you'll spend initial sort of that preparatory time, almost kind of delaying the change that will come down the track. That's kind of been the experience elsewhere.
Anne, do you want to join?
I'll just pick up on the planning point you made. Obviously, at the moment, the districts are local planning authorities, as you said. And the county covers the minerals and waste, there's planning authority for minerals and waste. And under a unitary, that unitary would be the planning authority for all of those. You're probably aware that under the Planning Infrastructure Bill, and I've forgotten the date, but when that finally goes through, you know, at some point next year, there will be a requirement. but when that finally goes through, you know, at some point next year, there will be a requirement for now, under devolution. I know we're not talking about devolution now, but uh under the devolved um structures, to there's a requirement for them to produce a spatial development strategy, which will be a stra- statutory document covering that devolved area, some more regional bases. In areas such as ours that do not have a devolved authority, it will come to that upper tier authority, i.e. a unitary when that's in place, you know, assuming it is, um or the upper tier authority. So there is a requirement requirement to develop that, or there will be when the Planning Infrastructure Bill goes through its final phases um to develop that stra- statutory document on that larger geography. The local plans will have to be cognisant of that, given it's a statutory document. And, you know, assuming, as you say, they're they're all at different stage, the different district local plans, the new ones will need to be, um you know, developed by the unitary authority in light of that um spatial development strategy when that's developed. So it will be a work over time as those come up for renewal, but done by that new uh planning authority.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bloxham.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, first of all, thank you to the officers for talking about the issues around disaggregation. It was really good getting some detailed practical examples of of where the problems are going to lie there. Um, my my question has kind of been answered from councillor Poland's question about the fact that this sort of thing has been tried before and it sounds like it's been tried and not been very successful before. So it's good to get these sort of fairly abstract things about, well, if we do this, this this is going to be an issue, this is going to be an issue. So I'm thinking about the business case we brought forward and to make it more persuasive, is it possible to sort of include a couple of case studies or something of where it's been tried, either by a city expanding or by breaking up a a county level authority and then failed with lower service quality and higher costs and things? Maybe that's my academic hat on or something, but just love case studies. Um, and then uh this is aimed at Rosemary for her her presentation. In in the bit about the pros and cons of the uh county plan, in the cons bit for the city, it talks about the financial issues, which we mentioned earlier, and Declan and Simone, I think, you know, sort of said that they they were not really cons. So again, it's more about how we how we argue this in the business case, but maybe we should take that out or adjust it and explain why they're not really cons, the the financial case. Um, and then in the same bit, it also talks about the housing issue. Uh, as Anne was just talking about with the combined authority, that that strategic level is going to do with housing, I think. And this is what the districts are saying, that the the city housing needs is not really a problem because once it's all devolved, the combined authority is going to be dealing with housing. So it will do it for the whole area and the city doesn't need to expand for that. So again, maybe that's something we need to cover as well in our business case. Thanks.
I think your point about case studies is a valid one. That's why I specifically asked the officers to give me an example of what a specialist service is, because it's like banning specialist ser- but what does that actually mean? So I think that's a point that they should take back and see if we can get from chief officers because I'm sure we've got loads anyway from work that we've done previously. Jane, do you want to come in?
Uh, yeah, I think just on the case study matter, I think you're right, Dr. Bloxham. I'm not sure the case studies will be to academic standard, but I think that um they are useful. And I think I I I think our intention is that we put forward case studies that demonstrate the opportunities as opposed to case studies that demonstrate where it's failed, so that our business case is setting out the opportunity. So the two examples for children's would be, um I think there's a there's a significant opportunity for um join up with housing to give our children that we have responsibility for care of um much better housing options and a a kind of much more of a coordinated, consistent approach. So so I'll be putting together a case study that sets out the opportunity of that. And I think the other case study is the one that um Mrs. Taylor um prompted around the case study of um delivering centralised services where it's on much more affordable to deliver it at a at a single level as opposed to a to two level as well. So we will be putting case studies together. And I I I think um offering those case studies as opportunities rather than critiques. I I think your point around what we've learned of where it's not worked before um are, there there are so many different reasons of why it's not worked. I'm just thinking of the Cheshire East and West. Um, and from a children's services point of view, the disaggregation led to one half of the organisation doing really well in children's because it was managed to retain the strong DCS, it managed to retain its workforce. Um, the other part of the organisation, so the east area, um had some real challenges around staff recruitment and therefore the services ended up being not good for children. And and their roster judgment then was reflected of that as well. So we we could include some of them. I think it would be more positive for us to include some of the positive opportunities going forward around that kind of single unitary.
Yeah, either way, positive far better than negative. Uh, Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry. Oh, Rosemary.
I've made a note and I'm going to make those changes.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Chair. Now, the comment we made, it's twenty four miles between Loughborough and Market Harbour. It's the city that sits in the middle. And having sat in a field in Mount Sorrel, and somebody said to me earlier this year, you know, where are you from in the county? I said Market Harbour. I might as well have said Mars. You know, people are, that that view of locals very small. And I also note Market Harbour and Loughborough are the only two unparished areas in the county. And I do get slightly irritated when we, we, we no shame, we talk to the parishes here, we talk to the parish here there. What happens in the unparished areas, we get, it's very hard to to even local members, I don't always feel we get to told stuff. So I do think relying on parishes is dangerous unless we set in parish councils elsewhere because some places aren't parish. Loughborough's our biggest town, Market Harbour isn't, I know that by. But, you know, and I know residency Market Harbour would see Glenfield as, you might as well be, you know, in Northumberland in some ways, because it's it's a long way away and it's awkward to get to. So I think we have to be really mindful, which brings me on to the point about responsiveness and customer focus. All I've heard about is internal things about how we disaggregate things. I'm not even sure, you know, can't, if we were splitting to two, say, can't two organisations commission one children's services, one adult social care? I fail to understand why we insist on going down that route. We've got one, more or less one revs and benefits thing. So, you know, where's the innovative thinking about how we deliver it? And I think the biggest crime shame in all of this is everybody hasn't got together and had this discussion and said, how can we do this more innovatively? And we've ended up with the districts in one camp and the city and the county in another. And it's 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 just awful because what's going to happen is somebody in Westminster will go, oh, that's what you're going to have, that's tough shit. And we will have zipping put to it. And it's a damn shame and it's awful, really. So, yeah, I, the whole thing is deeply frustrating, to be honest, Chair. Thank you.
I can answer one of those very easily. As a unitary authority, you have to have a DCS and you have to have a lead member. It's a statutory duty.
People beneath them, in terms of the organisation that delivers, could be one across the piece.
The problem you would have is if you had different political groups running the two and you end up, I'm not, I don't agree with your, so you've got to have a leader and a chief exec and they might not agree with what the other districts, the other unitaries doing. And I think that's where you would create more and more.
Yeah, but realistically, for an adult social care, everybody's actually delivering a similar level of stuff because that's all they can afford. We don't see massive differences, I don't think. John can correct me, do? But I I just would like to, at least, nobody's explored it even, and that's the disappointment of this. Nobody's actually looked and said what is feasible on this front.
I think, Jane, because we can't.
Yeah, just 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 on the, just on the point you made around commissioning, you're right. Two organisations could um set up a, what we would call a children's trust. That's a model that's been used for children's services that are failing and have failed. Um, those models are hugely costly, so they would triple, they would they would add significantly to the cost that we've set around at either the two unitary or the three unitary, sorry, or two unitary model. So it is possible. The the issue is you would still need two directors of children's services. So if you did, if you did that, if you went ahead and we commissioned um children's services across the model that is proposed by the districts, you would need a chief executive of the trust, you would need two DCSs, you would need two virtual school heads, I'll I'll keep going on, there are a number of statutory posts. So it it can, it can be done, um but it's costly and it's it's not seen as a tool. And the DFE have recently come out to support this. It's not seen as a as a method, really, that's good for those authorities that are performing well. So I think we we need to be really mindful of that around the delivery of it and and really, really understanding what it means. And and I I won't speak with John, but you know, it's the same for adult services. So we we know the county area well, we know where the needs are. Um, we already work well with district partners around delivering services for children. So we know um what the local need is, we fully respect the the kind of preventive decisions that they're they're making. And so I think we need to hold on to that when we're thinking about what the future model looks like. The large single unitary is essentially a continuation of the strong services that we currently deliver at a county level and the opportunity to join together with the strong services delivered at district level. So it offers an opportunity as opposed to a disaggregation.
I think that's why we didn't, we didn't go down that route because we know it's just not feasible. John?
In terms of adults, um there has never been an example of adult services being um run in that way. So it would be very innovative, but it would be inherently risky. Um, I think what in terms of costs, costs in adult services vary wildly. So the cost is the spend, sorry, I said spend rather than cost, uh spend in adult services varies wildly. There are authorities that spend per head of population twice what we spend on adult social care, simply because they can. Authorities tend to spend what they what they can afford, which, because everybody wants to do the best that they can do. And um those authorities that have more spending power spend more money. And where you get, if you if you disaggregate into different authorities, you will have authorities with different spending power. And that will create problems in terms of if you had a single adult social care service. You might have one authority wanting to spend one amount of money and another authority wanting to spend another amount of money. And you'd have, but you've got a single adult service providing it and commissioning and therefore commissioning the same providers. Would you commission different level of service from the same provider from one authority to them from another authority? It goes back to the point that Mr. News was making about, do we want to see that kind of differentiation in service delivery? The biggest issue for me, um because it has been done, whilst there's not been an example of 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 a single adult service being commissioned by two authorities, some authorities have looked to outsource responsibilities. So Staffordshire outsourced their commissioning responsibilities to the NHS a few years ago. Um, a couple of other authorities, one authority set up an independent organisation. They have all been brought back because they all overspend. And if you've got forty percent of your uh budget on adult social care, which is roughly what you're likely to have, as an authority, do you really want to give the responsibility for spending that forty percent of your budget to somebody else? Would be the question I would pose.
Thank you. I mean, to Dr. Hill's point about people sitting down together, I have reported this to the cabinet beforehand in a written report. And you go back to last December when the white paper was published. So early in January, the then acting leader, Mrs. Taylor, and I were invited by the districts to attend a meeting with leaders and chief executives of all the districts, Rutland, the city and ourselves. And we were told, the start of the meeting, by the leader of Melton on behalf of the districts, that they'd met together, they'd met with the city, with Rutland, and they'd come to a preferred position, which was a north-south split, but with an extended city boundary. Which frankly surprised Mrs. Taylor and I. Um, it wasn't immediately apparent the leader of Obi and Wixton had anticipated what that might mean for Obi and Wixton. And it didn't become clear as the call went on. It did become clear subsequently. So that was presented to us on the basis of take it or leave it. Mrs. Taylor said, well, I'd like to consider some other options if you don't mind. And that was really the end of the meeting. It was interesting and we asked for a note at that meeting to be circulated, so everybody was in the picture and the districts refused. Ourselves and the city asked for a note, the districts refused. The district's position hasn't changed since then, except they've taken out latterly the idea of um an extended city boundary. Um, they've never been open to any compromise. The leader was approached within days of being elected by the leader of Melton on the basis of here it is, take it or leave it. And he politely said, well, no, thank you. I'd like to consider my own position first. So there's been no attitude, which I would say from the districts, has lent itself to the sort of conversation you think would be necessary. It's not our fault. Professionally, for the reasons you've heard today, we couldn't recommend a north-south city split and a disaggregation. And that's putting political considerations aside, which are no part of ours.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your patience. Over to you now.
Cheers, Chair. Thank you very much. And uh we've had a long meeting, so I won't go over anything that everybody else has said. Uh, but I do agree with what a lot of what Michael um has said earlier. But I just wanted to touch on on Rutland. Um, obviously our bid will go in, or any bid will go in with Rutland being part of of the deal, as they say. Uh, but have we had any concrete discussions with them? Are they happy with uh coming in with Leicestershire on the bid? Because the reason I ask is, you know, they fought quite hard to move away from Leicestershire uh and they were successful. And and now what we're trying to do is we'll, you know, wheel them back in. Um, and uh, yeah, so that's that's one. Whereas because if if we haven't and we haven't smoothed that path, um is there a danger that we'll put in the submission and then Rutland will put in a letter um and say, look, hold on, we're not, we're not happy with this bid at all because we don't want to be a part of a one Leicestershire um kind of bid. So that's my first question. And the second one is about the strategic mayoral authority that will sit above whatever happens underneath. Um, so in our business case, will we refer to that one? And will we refer to it in informing and having a mayor in place before the restructuring goes ahead? So thanks very much for that. I'd just like those two clarifications.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Do you want to pick up the leader, the issue with Rutland?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I can confirm, we have tried to meet on various occasions, but I can confirm next week, yeah, just confirming my appointment very kindly on the fifth of November. And apparently the leader's had some medical issues and all sorts, but there has been attempts, in all fairness, for quite some time. So hopefully on the fifth of November, I shall be more knowledgeable of the situation. I can bring that back for our next scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you. And the devolution point, who wants to pick that, Rosemary?
Um, yeah, so we are saying that we'd like a mayoral strategic authority for Leicester, Leicestershire and Rutland in our business case, but we've not included anything about timescales.
Thank you. Is anyone else that's not spoken in this section want to speak? Mr. Galton.
Thank you, Chair. Very interesting discussion. Brings back memories of nineteen ninety seven, which only few of us still have. John still uh does. And one of the biggest issues wasn't all this, it's what happened afterwards in terms of um the statutory transfer processes. And all the things you said about, well, it was done, the city became a unitary authority, then it was part of the county then. All the things that happened about assets and museums and goodness knows what, but probably best not to dwell on that too much. But what I wanted to just go back on was the issue uh of service quality, which some of the chief officers had touched on. Uh, I'm afraid I'm going back to city expansion again. And yes, you know, it's been mentioned that we have uh problems and we have complaints and all that. But um the city has a number of failing services. I'm really after advice how, to the extent to which this can be brought out in the submission and written up. Um, because what residents say to me is that um they're very worried that the quality of services, uh if they were forced into uh an enhanced, larger city, uh is a problem. Uh, city has a number of main failing services uh around children's, which has long gone on for a long time. Uh, but there's two levels of that. There's the statutory processes um um that that go on. But there's also residents' feelings and perceptions about that. Now, um in 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 relation, their response obviously is that it's a city, they have much higher needs, they have a lot of prob- problems, demand is more. But what I'm after really understanding from uh Jane and and John is, what what are the argu- what are the overall arguments and, you know, what can be done? And Jane, Jane was suggesting in the uh uh, I think it was um somewhere up north where where the split took. It was all down to where the staff went, uh and and so on, and how the deal was was done. And that would happen, that would happen in a uh in an advanced city. Some of the staff uh here at the county would end up going to work in the city or not, or not as the case may be, they'd choose to leave. Um, so just in terms of how that might be written up, yeah, we've got the financial and all that. But my concern, and certainly those of residents, is service quality. Uh, just would be very keen to have any comments on that. It it may be that it's not things that can be done, but uh in in a formal bid. Um, it's probably possibly more of a political handled that needs to be brought out. But, yeah, that that's my concern. Thank you.
Um, yes, I think a couple of things. So um just on the most basic level, we know that children's services in Leicestershire have been judged to be outstanding. Um, and currently, children's services within the city are judged to be required improvement. They were um requiring improvement, sorry, they weren't judged to be good um some time ago, but they've just, most recent inspection is requires to be improved, requires improvement. Um, if the city boundary was to expand, then um what it would mean for children's services, obviously a proportion of staff um would need to move over. would need to move over, or the budget for a proportion of staff would move over. I think you're right in identifying some of the staffing concerns there because staff already make choices about whether they want to work in the city or whether they want to work in the county. There's all sorts of reasons that motivate them to work in different areas. So staff may well make different choices to move to a city authority or may well make choices to stay and work in the county. So there will be some challenges around staff recruitment. I'm hopeful that won't be our challenge to deal with, but there will be staff movement. And the other issue is that there will be children that will move according to the postcode in which they live. So those children that are currently open to, on a child in need plan or child protection plan that are within the boundary that may well move over will then be the responsibility of the city. And those children who are in our care, who were born in the area that covers the expansion will become the responsibility of the city, no matter where they live. And then obviously we need to think about some of the infrastructure that we've got within children's services. So we've got children's homes that we manage that may well be within that changed area. I'm not overly concerned because we can deliver children's services in other areas, but we do have family hubs and the like. So I think we would just need to, I think your point around understanding how we put that in the business case is a good one. And I think we can make reference to how services are currently delivered within the county and city area, which are delivered under a very different model. For understandable reasons, the city is a highly urbanised area that delivers services very differently from us. So I think we can make that point and we'll be making that point, but probably on the basis of the way in which the county currently delivers their services and how that's led to our judgement of being outstanding. And I think the rest of it kind of speaks for itself, doesn't it, in terms of the judgements of services? But we do need to remember there are staff who choose to work in the city because it's the place they want to work as well. So there may well be some different choices that staff make.
Okay, Mr Pannell, I've got you down. Has your question been answered? Do you want to ask it? I want to draw this to a closer very quickly, please.
Yeah, just very, very quickly then, leader. Pam, I'm falling into Mrs Bottomley's questions about parish councils. This is, we talked about whether we want change and so forth. I think actually where the policy gets it right is parish councils. So in my patch, I've got seven parish and town councils. Someone like Seyston has got a load of staff and is probably comparable with a small, very small borough council. Then you've got Ratcliffe on the Reek Parish Council, which with the best will in the world, six people in a very bar time clerk who do their best, but they would hate the idea of having extra powers. So I think it's right that we give them the choice and they're there if they want it, but they don't have to have it. And I think that's the good balance. Secondly, district function. So for obvious reasons, we talked a lot about disaggregation today, but what about if we did have a one Leicestershire functions that are currently district and borough? So I'm thinking, I'm an old hat on as lead member for housing at Charmwood. Would the sort of, the idea be to try and keep those teams in place to the extent we can do? So that residents that are currently council tenants, the day after a new authority comes in, don't notice a difference. They still pay their rent in the same way, they still get their repairs in the same way. They still have the same contacts, all of that remains the same for them. Would that be the sort of plan there? And just a clarification on a comment James has made now actually in regards to children born in an area that was county but will go into the city. Can I just clarify what you mean by born? And the reason I say that is because I live in the county, obviously, my children were born in the city. I guess most county children were born in the city. So what do you mean? Is it like where their first house was or do you literally mean where they were born? In which case almost all of them are going to be in the city, aren't they?
Might make service delivery for the county slightly easier. I was, sorry, Mr Pannell, I was referring to our children in care. So we've got 700 children that are in our care and for whom we have responsibility for, no matter where they live. Because they came into our care because they were children who resided in Leicestershire at the time of which they came into our care. What I was referring to is that if the city expansion went ahead, then those children who were born, who are in our care, who were born in the new city area would become the responsibility of the city.
Who we're talking to, okay.
So the home address, yeah, the home address.
Yeah, yeah. I wouldn't worry overly about the complexity. I probably overconfused it. But it was just a bit about explaining how children may well move to services and they would become the responsibility as well.
Do you want to pick up those other two points quickly? He wants to.
I'll just say what Rosemary was going to say, safe and legal, I'll say that. But the other point I was going to say is from talking to peers across the country who've already gone through this, because bear in mind, in the last few years, last decade, a number of authorities have gone to a unitary model. The thing about day one is keeping the wheels on the bus, sorry, excuse the highways and transport referencing, but I mean across all services. So the idea is people do not notice the difference on day one, they still get their service. If things change, it changes over time as you get, you know, you change teams, you migrate things, et cetera. But it's about keeping the wheels on the bus literally on day one, so they shouldn't notice the difference.
Chief?
You looking to bring the meeting to a conclusion?
I was just going to say something else before I sum up and allow you. Is that okay? Just one point that, I don't know if it's in the main business can, is I work with partners and I'm talking probably more emergency services, police, fire, also health, all those sorts of people. So the impact of splitting the county in half is going to have a huge impact on those partners as well. So, you know, they're going to have to go to double the amount of meetings to facilitate that. So was that included in the business case as well?
Yes.
Chief, then I'll go to the leader.
I was just going to say in response to Mr Galton, yes, I remember that very well. The 1990s reorganisation was the last one on this scale until now. The enabling legislation was 1992, the last structural change was 1998. During that time, there were three secretaries of state, starting with Heseltine, who was reshuffled. And we've only had two so far. Heseltine was succeeded by Michael Howard, who had different views to Heseltine. And Howard was succeeded by John Gummer, who was a fan of two-tier. The whole thing was a mess. And during that six years, there was a High Court intervention. So members have expressed concern about the tight timescale. We'll have to see if history repeats itself at all. But could I just say, well, I've got the mic, if you don't mind, just to summarise what I was saying before about the timeline and the circumstances we found ourselves in. I mean, there was an election in May, there was a new council. I didn't expect such a new council to be in a position to come to a position on its preferred option for reorganisation straight away. We had two council meetings in July. We were left with two negative resolutions. I spoke to the leader and to the cabinet and said, we need to find a way forward. My advice was it was to do some financial modelling, if we could with the city and with the districts. We were succeeding with the city, not with the districts. The group leaders, as you remember, Chair, agreed that. We went ahead as quickly as we could. We reported to the council. We reported to the cabinet in September. We couldn't report to the cabinet in September because the modelling wasn't finished. When it was finished, shortly after the council meeting, we did all we could to make sure all members were aware of it. We then started, having had a clear step from the administration, once they'd seen the results of the modelling, on its preferred option, to draft the business case. It's not ready, but as I said, we'll get it to the next council meeting. But I think in a circumstances we do as well as we could possibly do. And if there had been district elections in May, we'd be having a very different conversation today.
Thank you. I do appreciate the timescales. I think what was frustrating for a lot of members, there was no direction of preference. And I think that was the frustration that was caused. I'll go to Mr Fowler for anything you want to add at the end of this.
Not a great deal. To be honest, I'm happy with what the officers have said. I think it kind of summarises the general points that I think at least the majority of us agree on when it comes to the preferred option. And I think the level of cooperation that is between all parties on this is really important, especially with the timeframe that's in mind. But yeah, that's really, I've not got a lot to say on it.
Mr Cook?
I've got nothing to add, but thank you.
Thank you. Leader?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'd just like to thank you and the scrutiny commission teams who invited us in. I think it's been a very, very worthwhile event, so I'm delighted and grateful for that. And look forward to returning as soon as possible with more information. Oh, and I'd like to thank the officers. Did I miss the officers out? I apologise. I can hardly see them, but no, they've had to handle the heavy bits this afternoon and I really appreciate what they've been doing. Thank you.
And yeah, I'll just add my thanks to the whole of the commission and obviously additional people there and the officers for coming. I think it's been a fantastic meeting. I know it's gone on quite a while and you can blame me for chairing it really badly, but I think it's been a really useful meeting and I look forward to us meeting back the next meeting on 10th of November, that we have a draft of the business case. Please, that we can actually scrutinise, that would have been great. So thank you all and have a good evening. Thank you.
Yes.